Hello all, and welcome back to our city council meeting. Today is October 27, 2025, and call to order, as I mentioned, it is officially 5:31. Enroll call, please, Brian.
Vice Mayor Solarsino?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Mayor?
Here.
Councilmember Namura?
Here.
And Mayor Alarcon?
Here. Closed session report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alarcon, council members. We were in closed session to discuss one item pending litigation. The case was Eileen and Stephen Markison versus City of Carpinteria and Ailright LLC. There's no reportable action.
Thank you. And if you are willing and able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to introductions, proclamations, and presentations, and we have an introduction of a new employee.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I am so delighted to introduce Tatiana Suriel, Public Works' new environmental program specialist. Tatiana holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in anthropology, sociology, and women's studies from Hobart and Williams Smith Colleges, and recently graduated with a master's degree in environmental science and management from UC Santa Barbara's Bren School, specializing in coastal resource management and environmental policy. With over five years of experience in the nonprofit sectors of clean and renewable energy, education reform, and blue climate policy, Tatiana brings a strong mix of technical knowledge, program management, and community engagement experience, and a passion for protecting coastal environments. We are thrilled to have Tatiana onboard and look forward to the great work she'll do with Carpinteria's Sustainability and Environment Division. Thank you.
Good afternoon or evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Thank you, Delaney, for the kind introduction. It's a privilege to stand here before you all today, and I really look forward to working with you all, hopefully collaborating, and bringing Carpinteria's environmental programs forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Tatiana. We're excited to work with you as well. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing October as Promotoras Month in the City of Carpinteria. And I will go ahead and open up public comment. We do not have any speaker slips. Do we have anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Okay, I will go ahead and officially close public comment and bring it back to the council for approval prior to reading the proclamation.
I move to approve the proclamation recognizing October as Promotoras Month in the City of Carpinteria.
Second.
Great, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We will now read the proclamation, and we will start with Councilmember Mayor.
Whereas Promotoras, also known as community health workers, serve as trusted messengers, educators, and advocates within their neighborhoods, helping families navigate health and social service systems with compassion and cultural understanding, and...
Whereas Promotoras play an essential role in advancing health equity by addressing barriers such as language, access, and trust, ensuring that underserved communities receive the care and resources they need, and...
Whereas in Carpinteria, Promotoras have been instrumental in connecting children and families to vital services, including early education, mental health supports, food and housing assistance, and preventative healthcare, and...
Whereas their timeless efforts strengthen the health and resilience of our entire community, building bridges between residents and service providers, and ensuring that no family is left behind, and...
Whereas the month of October designated as Promotoras Month to celebrate and honor the frontline workers who embody and the spirit of community empathy and service.
Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Carpinteria does hereby proclaim October 2025 as Promotoras Month in the City of Carpinteria, and encourages all residents to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of Promotoras to the health and well-being of our community. And with that, we'd love to present this proclamation to Teresa.
Take a picture first.
Okay, everybody in here, ready? Stay put for just a sec. Okay, everybody smile. Thank you.
Take a picture first. Thank you so much, Mayor Alarcon and members of the council. This is really a recognition for all of our wonderful Promotoras, and we just wanted to make sure that they are acknowledged for all of the hard work, they're trusted messengers in the community, and the Carpinteria Children's Project can't do the work that we do without them. So, muchisimas gracias a todos nuestros Promotoras y Promotores. Realmente no podemos hacer nuestro trabajo sin ellos. Gracias a ustedes por su apoyo también. Thank you. We now have a proclamation recognizing and celebrating the 39th anniversary of the California Avocado Festival. I will first open up public comment. I do not have any speaker slips. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Okay, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for approval prior to presenting and reading the proclamation.
I move to approve the proclamation recognizing and celebrating the 39th anniversary of the California Avocado Festival. Second.
Perfect, we have a first and a second. All those in favor? We will now read the proclamation, and we will start with Councilmember Mayor.
Whereas in 1987, members of the Carpinteria community organized a modest community festival that, over the years, has grown to be recognized in California, across the nation, and internationally as one of the best free street and music festivals in the world, and...
Whereas the organizers determined that the purpose of the festival would be to celebrate avocados, the beauty of Carpinteria, and the spirit of our community, and...
Whereas the festival provides a wonderful homecoming of our town with community members of all ages showing up to celebrate together, and...
Whereas this year marks the 39th anniversary of the annual California Avocado Festival, and...
Whereas the festival will bring tens of thousands of people to the city and provides an opportunity for many local not-for-profit organizations to fundraise in support of the community's services, and...
Whereas, as a zero-waste event, the Avocado Festival helps to implement the city's sustainable community policy, and...
Whereas the city, the California Avocado Festival Board, the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department, the Carpinteria Summerland Fire Protection District, and the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, all work together to make the festival a safe, family-friendly festival for our community, and...
Whereas the city expresses its great appreciation to festival producer Mike Lozaro, festival director Olivia Sorgman, and the California Avocado Festival Board of Directors, who all have played an integral part in the production of the California Avocado Festival and have dedicated significant time, effort, and event expertise. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Carpinteria does hereby recognize and celebrate the 39th anniversary of the California Avocado Festival, and heartily thanks Mike Lozaro and Olivia Sorgman and the entire Avocado Festival Board of Directors on their efforts to promote and unite the Carpinteria community. Thank you all.
And we'd love to invite you over for a photo, and then please feel free to say a few words. Yeah. Official. Yeah. Hi. You know, Angela, that's how you're working. Sorry, now they're saying. Okay, this is, this is festival cameras. Hold on. Really nice, big smiles. Okay, stay. All right, more smiles. Perfect. Thank you.
Well, we did it. We're so excited. Thank you so much for this honor. It's nice to be standing up here after the festival. We're so proud of everything that we accomplished, and we're so thankful to everyone that makes this possible for us. Obviously, you all know it's a Herculean effort, getting to it, going through the weekend, and then recovering from it. So, thank you, thank you. We're just so thankful to have partners such as you all to be a part of this event with us, and we are so excited. Next year is the 40th, so, woo, get ready. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to our next agenda item, which is a presentation by Representative or Representatives of Chevron USA Inc. about the Carpinteria Oil and Gas Facility decommissioning. Welcome.
Thanks for the opportunity to come and address city council. Good evening. Nice to see you. My name is Mark Corte Nahabedian. I'm the Corporate Affairs Advisor for Chevron for the West Coast Decommissioning Program. Got members of our team here available to answer questions for you as we provide an overview of some of the decommissioning activities that are coming up. So, we can go ahead and advance to the next slide. So, just as sort of a grounding, Carpinteria Plant is immediately south and adjacent to us here, consists of 55 acres within the city. All the existing facilities at that plant are to be fully removed and the soil remediated. That's sort of the top-line overview of the whole project. All the facilities at the property have been cleaned, flushed, prepped for their final decommissioning, and went through an extensive environmental impact report analysis, sequo process, released late 2023 for the draft, and the public comment period closed January 2024. Thank you all so much for the partnership in advancing that important document. I was certified, released on April 10, the final EIR, and was certified by the Planning Commission here in the City of Carpinteria and on Cinco de Mayo. We've got the World Series going on now in Cinco de Mayo. I'm happy to keep the tradition of important community events happening when we're giving presentations to council. Like you said, it's certified on Cinco de Mayo and subsequent appeals. That administrative appeal process concluded on October 8 of this year, and so the Environmental Impact Report is now certified. Okay, go ahead and jump to the next slide. So, this highlights that the sort of decommissioning plan and process, and the sequo process in particular. You see, our program was established in 2017 when we assumed responsibility for the plant, and we submitted the draft, we started developing the draft permit application back in 2019. This has been a long, a long and fruitful process to get to where we are today. Submitted that application in 2021, and it went through the typical sequo process. The NOP was released in August of 2022. That EIR draft was developed by the City of Carpinteria and their staff, and was ultimately released for public comment 2023. We're now, as the final EIR has been certified and the associated coastal development permits have been certified, we're now in that stage of the project where we're seeking those final permit approvals and submitting all of the associated plans for the work, which go to the next level of detail past the EIR, right? So, I think we've submitted something like 37 individual and discreet, unique plans that detail how and when the work will be done for the plant, and those are all subject to the city's approval and working with many other agencies to bring it to conclusion. Once, once all those approvals are in place and all those plans have been approved, then we can start work at the, at the plant. And so, the next couple of slides here, as we get to sort of this final permits and execution phase of the work, our intent is to try and show you as much of that as we can, so that you know what to expect in the City of Carpinteria as we go about this work. Thanks. Jump to the next one. So, this is our decommissioning and remediation 101 slide. On the left side, you see the arrows there. There are a couple of discrete bodies of work. First is sort of the demolition phase, where you remove the above and below-ground facilities. And important for us to note, too, some of the select trees that are, you know, at the fence line or need to be removed in order to make room for the excavation subsequently. Some of that removal will be sort of the up-first activities that we see. All of those materials, right, the metal in the tanks and some of those above-ground and subsurface facilities are going to be transported off-site for recycling. Any material that can be recycled will be, and then some will go to disposal as well. Once those facilities are out of the way, there's a certain amount of data that we need to collect underneath, say, the foundations of where some of those old facilities need to be, that will inform the remediation plans and the excavation plans and stuff like that. So, some data collection goes on that can happen, you know, coextensive with some of the demolition and remediation activities. Once all of that is complete, remediation is the next step, so excavating all of the impacted or contaminated soil at the site, and then transporting all of that to the appropriate disposal facility. That's ultimately then all backfilled, and the grade is restored back to the original grade at the site. You start doing things like the surface drainage stabilization and ultimately revegetation of the site as well, native plants and things, and that's what we call restoration. So, demolition, data collection, remediation, and then restoration. We wanted to highlight as well sort of the operational schedule, what to expect and when. So, we've got a very detailed breakdown of how all this work can proceed, and the schedule's highlighted here at the right. So, expecting, you know, starting in 2026, about two to three years of sustained activity across the 55 acres, and you can see there's overlap here, right? Demolition can go all the way out to mid-2027. Some of that data collection, once some of the infrastructure's out of the way, we can collect data and information that we need to inform those plans. And then, in certain parts of the site, you'll see remediation while other demolition activities are ongoing, right? And so, just wanted to highlight that there's an overlap at different parts of the site. There'll be different activities happening, and many of those are, you know, subject to monitoring, things like that. I'll highlight that this schedule is, you know, preliminary and subject to a lot of caveats there. This has, you know, got to be done in concert with some of the biologic resources that exist in and around the property. Weather matters, right? Timing for permit approvals matters. You know, some of the agencies that we work with are federal agencies, and so even in this initial startup period, there are delays associated with the federal government shutdown as well, right? So, there's a lot of factors that can contribute and impact to this schedule, but we wanted to provide at least an overview here of sort of what the most optimistic look-ahead case for the next two or three years is. Okay, on to the next slide. So, getting to some of the detail here, right? On the first slide, we showed a map that had some of, a lot of these figures and tables and things that we'll reference are in the Environmental Impact Report. So, these are all publicly available, right? And what I wanted to highlight for you here is that the different types of activities that might be happening at different locations on the property. SpaceX rocket. Okay, so then, thanks for the patience there. So, the, I guess the highlight, surface facilities demolition, right? You can see that's happening across many different areas where there are existing facilities today at the plant. Subsurface facilities demolition, you see some of those are connected by pipes and other infrastructure like that, and those will be demolished in some of those discrete areas. And you can, I guess, refer to this presentation later or to the Environmental Impact Report to show what activities are going to be happening where across the property. On the bottom, the lower-left image is a picture from the Carpinteria Plant, so just wanted to spend a few minutes talking about the monitoring that we'll have going on. We've installed fence line air quality monitoring at all four boundaries to the property, north, south, east, and west, and sound monitoring on the northwest and south side closer to people and some of those biologic resources that we talked about before. So, those will be operating and collecting baseline data before the start of work, and then they'll be monitoring continuously whenever work is happening, so that we can, so that we can quantify and characterize and make sure that we're not having impacts outside of the fence line. Second picture shows, there was actually a tank that Chevron removed in Kern County earlier this year. It's very similar in size and capacity to Tank 861, which is the big tank on the property. And so, that's a picture from, from the demolition of that tank where an excavator with shears basically cuts and cuts the tank into smaller pieces until they ultimately break it down and load the equipment in pieces into trucks, and they're removed for disposal. Next, in that sort of process flow across from left to right, shows an excavator that's got a hammer that would remove some of the foundations. That's what it's doing in that picture right there, and so breaking up some of the concrete associated with the legacy facilities. Once all those are removed, you can see a picture of an excavator and a truck there. Will make excavations for areas of impacted soil, remove all the soil that has impacts associated with it that'll ultimately get transported to an appropriate disposal facility. All truckloads leaving the site will be tarp down, and so none of that, none of that material can get out into the environment as it's in transit. Ultimately, the site will be restored, all the grade back to its original condition with clean, backfilled soil. And then the last picture is site restoration that's already taken place at the Carpinteria facility, and so this is some of the, what you might expect to see in terms of vegetation later. Did want to highlight, too, on the far right of there, the former nursery area and the buffer zone. The buffer zone is closest to the Lock and Cheeta neighborhood. No activities planned in those areas. They previously either didn't have any operational activities, and so no associated impacts. In the case, the former nursery, nursery area already remediated. Okay, on to the next slide. Material transport. So, I mentioned trucks, right? Taking first recycled materials and then also impacted soils out to appropriate disposal. All of the, it's in the traffic management plan, which we've submitted, right, and also quantified in the EIR, highlights that all trucks will basically come out from Dump Road, private road there that comes across the property. They'll exit to the east. There'll be traffic control at Dump Road to allow for safe navigation of those trucks, and then they'll come down to the east to State Route 150, and then they'll, they'll go on to the Highway 101 from there. That's the defined route for all sort of ingress and egress from the property for those trucks, and so nothing coming through town. That's one thing I wanted to make sure that I highlighted for you. We're anticipating, on average, about 20 or 30 truckloads per day over this period of work, carrying first that recycled material and then the soils, and those are, the traffic management plan is prescriptive as to when they can operate on weekdays, daylight hours, and trying to miss the peak traffic times in particular. So, traffic away and out of town. On to the next one. So, offshore and nearshore activities as part of the project, we're removing all of the pipelines from the state-federal water boundary up to the bluff, right? And so, just wanted to highlight some of those activities. We've been in coordination with Seal Watch and others to highlight some of this upcoming work, but there are a total of four pipeline bundles. The Hill to Hazel is the westerly most of those, Marketing Terminal, the Marine Terminal, and then the Gale and Grace bundle, which is closest to the Harbor Seal Rookery and Hallout, right? And so, there are two phases of work associated with that. There's a time when we'll come down to the beach at a low tide and cut all, sever all of those pipelines, which again have all been cleaned, flushed, and are essentially hydrocarbon-free. They'll be cut in containment as a, you know, redundancy, but once those are severed, there's two bodies of work. One is the offshore portion, which will be facilitated by a barge, very similar to the barge that's currently operating off the Santa Barbara Harbor. If you've seen that, it'll be operating for the next month or so. So, a similar-sized vessel that can basically either pick up the entire pipeline in what's called a reverse lay operation and pick it up in essentially one piece and roll it up, and then, or a second methodology where it's cut on the seafloor under containment and the individual pieces are lifted up. So, that barge will operate 24/7, and it'll mobilize out according to our schedule in the summertime of next year. And the onshore portions of the work come from basically that low-tide limit up to the bluff face, right? And there, you see in the upper-left corner of the map, there's access through the state beach there, and then the equipment will move down the beach each day in and out and remove that pipeline that's in the shore crossing or in the tidal zone. Following that activity, each of those pipelines come up through vaults into the bluff. Some of those cross tar pits park, and so access agreements from the City of Carpinteria will be brought to you by, by your team for approval at a later date to create access for those areas that are not on Chevron's property, and similarly for the state park and the coastal access as well. So, all those pipelines are to be removed, basically from the bluff crossing all the way out to the three-mile limit. Okay. Next slide. Wanted to thank the city, and in particular, Jelitza PIO here, for the coordination on community outreach. We're committed to transparency and to communication as we go about this important work. For the final EIR, there are mitigation measures that are prescriptive communications that we'll make to neighbors, to the plant, as well as to those along the transport corridor out to Highway 150, but we would like, we are coordinating currently with the PIO to bring more communication, right, through social media, traditional media, your e-newsletters that go out, and as well as collaborate with them to update a city website that'll have current and updated project information so that, so the community understands what's happening and when it's happening and what to expect as we go through some of these areas. In addition to those, we're taking, we facilitated a number of different site visits in the preparation for this work, but open to having more key personnel, in particular from Jelitza's team, that are going to be responding to community inbounds to understand what's going to happen next, and so that they have familiarity with the site as well. We're also committed to coming back to city council as we, you know, periodically achieve milestones in this work, to come back and be available to answer questions for you all, should you have any. Wanted to highlight for the community as well that we maintain a 24-hour community hotline, right? Phone number is listed on the screen there, and you can also email wcdprogram@chevron.com, and we'll respond to any inquiries that are made. There's a, a time when we'll come down to the beach at a low tide and cut all, sever all of those pipelines, which again have all been cleaned, flushed, um, and are essentially hydrocarbon free. They'll be cut in containment as a, you know, redundancy, but once those are severed, there's two bodies of work. One is the offshore portion, which will be facilitated by a barge, very similar to the barge that's currently operating off the Santa Barbara Harbor. If you've seen that, it'll be operating for the next month or so. Um, so a similar sized vessel that can basically either pick up the entire pipeline in what's called a reverse lay operation and pick it up, uh, in essentially one piece and roll it up. And then, uh, or a second methodology where it's cut on the seafloor under containment and the individual pieces are lifted up. So that barge will operate twenty-four seven and it'll mobilize out, um, according to our schedule in the summertime of next year. And the onshore portions of the work come from basically that low tide limit up to the bluff face, right? And, um, there, uh, you see in the upper left corner of the map, there's access through the state beach, um, there. And then the equipment will move down the beach, um, each day in and out and, um, remove that pipeline that's in the shore crossing or in the tidal zone. Following that activity, each of those pipelines, um, come up through vaults into the bluff. Some of those cross tar pits park. Um, and so access agreements from the city of Carpinteria will be brought to you by, um, by your team for approval at a later date, uh, to create access for those areas that are not on Chevron's property. And similarly for the state park and the coastal access as well. So all those pipelines are to be removed, um, basically from the bluff crossing all the way out to the three, uh, mile limit. Okay. Next slide. Wanted to thank the city and in particular Jelitza PIO here for the coordination on community outreach. We're committed to transparency and to communication as we go about this important work. For the final EIR, there are mitig, there are mitigation measures that are prescriptive communications that we'll make to neighbors, uh, to the plant as well as to those along the transport corridor out to, uh, highway one fifty. But, um, we would like, we are coordinating currently with the PIO to bring more communication, right? Through social media, uh, traditional media, your e-newsletters that go out, um, and as well as collaborate with them to update a city website that'll have current and updated project information so that, um, so the community understands what's happening and when it's happening and what to expect as we go through some of these areas. In addition to those, we're taking, we facilitated a number of different site visits in the preparation for this work, but open to having more key personnel, in particular from Jelitza's team, that are going to be responding to community inbounds, um, to understand what's going to happen next and so that they have familiarity with the site as well. We're also committed to coming back to city council as we, uh, you know, periodically achieve milestones in this work, uh, to come back and be available to answer questions for you all, should you have any. Wanted to highlight for the community as well that we maintain a twenty-four hour community hotline, right? Phone number is listed on the screen there. And you can also email WCDprogram@chevron.com and, uh, we'll respond to any inquiries that are made from the community or from city council, um, that engage with that, um, mechanism. With that, I'd want to thank you for your time. And I'm, our team here is available to answer any questions you might have that, um, that I couldn't answer myself, right? So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open it up to questions.
I'm sure, I just, one quick question. Um, in terms of the barge work that, that'll be going twenty-four seven, is, does that involve any sort of, uh, light, lighting or noise or anything that would maybe be visible or detectable from the, the, um, land?
Yes, uh, the, the barge will be lit and will be visible from the shore. Based on the size and the, the needs for anchoring, it's not going to get within a thousand feet of the coast. Um, so, you know, as we've discussed that with, um, some of the Seal Watch organization, right? Who have obviously good concerns about the seals being able to rest at night and things like that. Those dark skies will be generally maintained, but you will be able to see it from shore. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Good question.
A few questions for you. First off, um, on this one, you suggested or said you were going to have a re-vegetation, um, remediation included in that one. Um, are we going to see plans of that? Is that going to go through, um, city planning for that?
Yeah, that's right. So there's a, there's a whole restoration plan that's submitted as part of that package. And that includes things like the seed mixes and things like that for, um, what kind of plants you might expect.
Okay. Um, good one there. And also then, based on that also, is there going to be a maintenance, um, agreement with that for say two, three years out beyond the remediation?
Sure. There's a, there's a performance monitoring requirement for all of those. So not only, it's not enough that the seeds get spread, right? But they have to take root and then thrive, right? And so there's performance monitoring, not only for the vegetation, but for the bluff stabilization as well in those areas where we're removing pipelines.
And just curious, is that going to include any walkways or areas, uh, for access for maintenance?
Through the property itself?
Yeah.
I don't think there are any commitments to, um, creating public access through the private property.
I was talking for more for maintenance issues.
Yeah, no, we'll maintain good access to those areas so that we can do the, the necessary maintenance for it.
The other question I had regarding drainage, it says drainage will be removed or, um, established and surface water will then have a flow factor to that one. My question is, um, is that going to include the bluff area and how is that going to be handled?
Yeah, the site restoration plans for the bluff include bluff stabilization, which take into account, um, any sort of changes into drainage, uh, into how the surface drainage works at the property. Um, and then it has to stabilize, right? So if there are erosion problems associated with it, um, Chevron's obligated to come back and ensure that those, um, do perform to the spec.
So is there any protection at all, um, for drainage along the bluffs itself or is that something that's just going to surface drain also?
Yeah, there's a, there's a stormwater pollution protection plan. I think I got that. It's called a SWIP, right? Um, that's, that's one of the plans that's, uh, I think been submitted to the city of Carp. So, yeah.
And last question I do have, uh, you talked about, um, removal of, um, all the items specific, all the materials they have out there.
Sure.
As much as twenty or thirty trucks a day, uh, was your estimate from what I understood?
Yeah, that's the average that was calculated in the.
That's going to be over a three-year period, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Have you done any, well, have we considered any type of funding then for the, I say, the, um, aggressive usage of our roads, uh, deterioration factors?
Deterioration factors for the roads.
Of the paved roads that you're going to be using because you're going to be taking twenty or thirty truckloads out a day on one specific route.
Yeah, I believe the answer to that is yes. As part of the traffic management plan, um, damage and impacts to the road are accounted for.
Damage is going to be included on that one?
Yep.
Would that be part of what we're going to then see as the city council? What that number is?
Uh, for a total dollar amount or for?
Yeah, just to estimate a dollar amount.
Hmm, I don't know if we have a dollar amount that's included in that. I think it's based more on the individual scope of repairs. And if there's damage associated with it, then we're obligated to come into.
We're talking about patchwork instead of something that's going to, something else different than that. We're talking specific potholes, things like that that occur, but not an overall resurfacing or subsurface structure, right?
I'll ask my team to confirm that. It's not an overall resurfacing, it's individual maintenance. Yeah, so it's based on the damage that's, uh, that incurs as part of the operation. Yeah.
Okay, um, that would probably be my only major concern would be that, but it sounds like we haven't got there yet.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I, I think what, what he refers to, you know, using the example, we, we've been replacing some of our roads in Carpinteria. And so we had consultants come in and, and, um, you know, they would, they would demonstrate things like, okay, you, if you have this many car trips, you get this much damage, but you'll also get it if you have this many truck trips. And it's a lot, there's, you know, it doesn't take many truck trips to ruin your road. And I think that's, if, let me know if I'm.
No, no, that, that is correct.
Characterizing the nature of his question is, you know, what about the potential long-term damage? So, you know, the, every road gets so much wear.
Sure.
But truck, truck trips take a lot more wear out.
Yeah, loaded truck trips. Understood. Did you have another comment?
Just the comment was, if you look at the roadways that we have that you're talking about, Dump Road is one of the worst areas currently. So it's only going to deteriorate quicker. Um, one of the concern or questions I would have possibly that would help us out, we know that there eventually is going to be a redo of that roadway specific once the, um, bridge comes in over Carpeneer Creek. I don't know if you've coordinated that, if that's going to be something that's going to happen before or after.
For Carp Ave as it comes to the east, you're saying. No, I know our team is involved, um, or members of our consulting team, but no, we haven't coordinated to that level of detail with the resurfacing or the repairs associated with that road. Just to be clear, avoiding the bridge and going to the east, right?
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate, um, that if you have more questions, uh, you can reach out to that number or to me, um, at any time and we're happy to answer any follow-up questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I will now open up public comments. I have a speaker slip coming. No, I'm looking at you. Welcome, Susan.
And this isn't specific to what we heard tonight, although I, believe me, I have lots of concerns. But residual. So in the last several weeks, we've had two, um, work incidents out at, um, out at the plant property, um, not related to Chevron, um, but some concern. Uh, one was, and we all knew about it, um, was the, was some electrical work. And I honestly thought it was just tree trimming and that little thing that comes around and get down there. And there's this huge crane, um, working very close to the seals, a lot of stuff going on. The seals were not there that morning that I was there, um, but no marine mammal observer. So I'm concerned that operations may be kind of, I don't want to say sneaking in, but kind of coming in, um, and not in Chevron's purview. The other one, um, that's been going on for the last week was, um, as I understand it, pigging at, um, Peta's Point. And I'm familiar with pigging operations, particularly at Peta's Point. And, um, uh, you know, that's kind of like in and out. And a week later, I was still snapping pictures. And one had me particularly concerned. It was a big blue barrel on a little piece of plastic with a long vent. And maybe that was just fine. I'm not saying there was anything wrong with it, but I, do we know that they got all of the proper permits from all of the agencies involved? And again, this wasn't a Chevron operation. It was who was ever clearing out, um, the, uh, Peta's Point. It just seemed like a lot of work and kind of no oversight. So just want to make sure little things like that aren't going on, um, during this work. And Wade, I agree with you about the roads. And I'm hoping there will be public access down Dump Road. People walk that, it's a safe railroad crossing and that should never be lost. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any more speaker slips?
Mayor, we have one raised hand on Zoom.
Great.
Uh, if you're ready, we have Alexandra Van Antwerpen. Alexandra, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. I wanted to thank you Chevron for this update. As a Carpinteria resident who has followed this project closely through every stage of the environmental review process, I appreciate seeing the timeline and scope of work ahead. And I am a planning commissioner, but I'm speaking for myself. My primary interest continues to be the long-term future of this significant fifty-five acre coastal property. While I'm confident the city will provide strong oversight during decommissioning and remediation, I hope we also maintain focus on what comes after, ensuring that this once-in-a-generation opportunity serves our community's long-term interests. So I look forward to the continued transparency and community engagement outlined in your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, that concludes Zoom comment.
Okay, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council if there's any other, um, comments, questions?
Just like others have said, I appreciate very much the presentation and the information. And I, I know that, uh, you've reached out to, to council and staff before with updates. So it feels like that's, uh, setting a great stage for, for future communications. So thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, real quick, um, request for staff, um, if possible, I'd like to actually have a, a road assessment specific of that area prior to the start of the project. So we could have a comparison, see how much quicker it may potentially.
Council member Namura, I, I think that's actually already been done. That's part of the obligation that Chevron needs to do before work starts is to do that roadway assessment and get that submitted to the city for acceptance.
Sounds good, thank you.
So we have a baseline.
Great.
Great, okay, thank you.
Uh, so I'll move to receive and file the presentation.
Second.
Okay, we have the first and the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We will now move on to public information, reports and announcements. And we will, uh, receive a report from a representative of our first district supervisor's office.
Good evening, Mayor Alakron and everyone else on the council, hello. Um, most importantly, the Dodgers are up two to zero. I think that's an important update. Um, okay, I wanted to dive into some things about the coastal commission meeting that's coming up on the sixth. So, um, I think you've all probably seen the report. Um, the coastal commission staff is recommending approval of the four, four rezones in the county, three in, um, unincorporated Carpinteria, which, and another one, the fourth one is in Isla Vista, um, which would yield an anticipated five hundred and ninety-eight residential units in Carp Valley. So quite a bit more housing. Last time I was here, there was a question about parking. Um, so we got in touch with, um, the housing authority of Santa Barbara County, who's working with the Baylor developers on the project. And we were told that there are two hundred and ninety-seven parking unit or parking spots, um, for this a hundred and eighty-two unit, um, development that they are proposing. So that's in the project, um, which apparently is above, um, the required amount, which is two hundred and six parking spots. So, um, HAZBARCO, the short term for shorthand for Housing Authority of Santa Barbara County, has told us that it's their impression that, um, all the, all the parking will be for that unit will be in that development. I, I know there's issues with modifications to the city right-of-way and, um, proposed, um, roundabout off Baylor, um, and the use of city resources. So HAZBARCO has indicated that they are willing to meet with city staff, that they're willing to do a presentation. So, um, I'd like to put that out to you all to talk about that and let us know. Happy to help facilitate that. So that's kind of the update I have on the parking regarding Baylor. There, we had a constituent reach out to us. Um, on page thirteen of the coastal commission report, there is a, um, there's a, there's a section that says, and I'll just read it here, it says, um, regarding Baylor, uh, the county estimates that the proposed rezoning from single-family residential three E one to design residential twenty would support a hundred and eighty-two units. This site is not in the coastal commission's appeals jurisdiction. So we had a constituent reach out and ask, what does that mean? So, um, that is related to the development, not the rezone. That's what our county council told us. So, um, for any project approved or denied for that location, there'd be no appeal to the coastal commission outside of the appeals jurisdiction, the county's action would be final. And anyone that would like to challenge would need to file litigation against the county. So that was a weird thing in there, but that's what that means. Site is not in the coastal commission's appeals jurisdiction means the rezone is part of the coastal commission, but the project is part of the county. So I wanted to also kind of bring up a couple of ways that this rezone conversation, the LCP, could end up back at the board of supervisors. So there's kind of four scenarios. So if the coastal commission certifies the amendment as it's submitted by staff, it will not go back to the board of supervisors and it is, it is what the coastal commission has decided. If the coastal commission denies without any modifications, then the amendment is not effective. So everything kind of stays the same, goes back to the drawing board. If the coastal commission denies, but then approves it with their own modifications, that's when it goes to the board of supervisors for acceptance. And when, if the board of supervisors accepts it, then it goes to the coastal commission for kind of the final stamp of approval. But there wouldn't be any more changes after that. However, if the board of supervisors does not accept, um, the modifications within six months, then the amendment is not effective. So that's all outlined in pages five and six of the coastal commission report. But I, it, I think it goes to show that, um, there's, there could be a high likelihood that this could come back to the board of supervisors. We don't have any indication from our planning development staff on how the coastal commission goes. So that is why, um, our office is trying to figure out how to make a comment that doesn't, um, force supervisory lead to have to recuse. So, um, we are looking at the best way to make a comment. So are there any questions about, um, Baylor specifically before I move on?
Yeah, one question. Um, so if it were to come back to board of supervisors or, or even in advance of the coastal commission hearing, uh, what's the best way for community members to get in touch with your office to voice their concerns? Because we, we've been hearing a lot of it on our end, but I want to make sure that they have information on how to, who to get in touch with specifically, um, that type of thing.
I say email the supervisor directly, royally at countyofsb.org. And I would like to say thank you to all the constituents that we have heard from. And, um, we really appreciate, uh, the commentary.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. I'd like to give you an update on cannabis. Um, the, speaking of the coastal commission, um, the board of supervisors just adopted the coastal commission amendment on, at the October twenty-first meeting. So, uh, what that means is that March eighteenth, twenty twenty-six is, um, when the carbon filtration systems have to be in. So it's not a new update, but it is set in stone. The coastal commission is the one that kind of moved that date up actually. So March eighteenth, twenty twenty-six, all carbon filtration systems must be in, in the Carpinteria Valley. Um, another update is that, um, I mentioned last time that there are, um, unannounced inspections going on, um, and in anticipation of March, when, um, odor will potentially still be coming out of the, um, systems, even if there are, are carbon filtration systems, even if they're, they're in and not plugged on, plugged in, whatever it may be. The district attorney's office is working with planning and development to come up with an enforcement plan. So the district attorney's office is, will have, have, um, a, a part in the enforcement that will come back to the board. What that looks like is coming back to the board, um, early next year. Any updates, any questions on cannabis? Okay. Alrighty, um, so, um, another recent meeting, I should have noted what meeting. So another recent meeting, I should have noted what meeting it was. I believe it was also the 21st, October 21st. The Board of Supervisors decided three to one, two, sorry, three to two, to start the process of transitioning away from fossil fuels onshore. So you might hear it as phasing out onshore oil and gas. We, the supervisors have directed staff to come back with findings for what those various phases could look like. So there's a Phase One and a Phase Two. So Phase One is no new oil wells, directing staff to find out the best way to go about implementing that. And then Phase Two would be a multi-year plan to transition away from fossil fuels and toward clean energy with the goal of retaining and expanding good jobs. So this is very much in the wait-and-find-out phase, but it was voted on to phase out onshore oil and gas. Those are my updates so far. I did want to give you a preview of next time. I will come and give you an update on the Santa Claus Lane updates. Phase One has been completed. It's, if you've been past it, it's that beautiful multi-use path and the new curve and the gutter and angled parking. So that's Phase One. Phase Two is beginning, which is the railroad crossing mostly. And then Phase Three will be updates to the business area, and so they're in the design phase. But I'll give you a much more thorough update on those next time.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Actually, just a quick comment. Thank you there for the report, and these are a lot more valuable than the previous reports we were getting. So nice job of bringing details in, showing attention to that one. And actually, working with the cannabis portion of it, that makes a big difference for us. So thank you for that. As far as some of the infrastructure, we're also probably going to be talking, this is going to be something that the county would be able to assist us with, and that would have to do with law enforcement. Since we are going to have them adjacent to the city of Carpinteria, we may want to take a look at how we could possibly use the financial support that we would get from these additional housing units that you're being proposed to.
Yep, sounds good, thank you. And I would just like to reiterate that Hazbarco has said that they would be happy to do a presentation for the council and meet with staff. So I would, I'll let them know that's a good question.
Thank you. And I do appreciate very much the District Attorney stepping in to assist us with taking care of the enforcement.
Yep, I'm looking forward to see what they have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open up public comment, and I have a speaker slip from Rogelio Delgado. Welcome.
Rogelio Delgado, Carpinteria resident. Yes, indeed, the Baylor farm, that's a big, huge concern for the people who live on Baylor. Politicians, they will not be affected. It will be the Baylor residents. Why? Number one, look at the parking problems that we've got right now. Try to find a parking space right now. Nope. Might wait an hour before you get one. Safety problems. More people, there's more, the potential for more crime. Traffic problems, imagine in the morning, going to school, going to work. That is why thousands of people at the Baylor condos, including both associations and the streets, for example, birch, the street, more affected. They're all against the projects. What about water, potential water problems? There have been two hearings scheduled September, October, and they both got canceled. Far away now, it's scheduled even further away, Sacramento. You're planning on going to Red Bull Beach, but Sacramento, no, we were ready. But what people are doing is that they're sending letters, because the ones, they sent thousands in the past, for the past three or four years, they have sent thousands of letters. And the Coastal Commission said, well, no, you have to start all over again. So once again, hope, I hope that there's a solution to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speaker slips, Brian?
For this item, we do not, Mayor, but we do have one person on Zoom.
Perfect.
Betty Jepson. Betty, go ahead. Betty, do you want to unmute yourself?
Sorry, thank you. I think it is very important that the city council sends someone to Sacramento to speak against the Baylor Redtail project. They have very, in many lies in their presentation. They say they have three emergency exits. They do not. And one of the alleged emergency exits is the private road behind the Birch condos that the gentleman ahead of me was speaking about. That is the only avenue for people to back out of their driveways and get to Baylor. And we have calculated that there are about 1,440 possible residents in that new development, only nine units of which will be low-income, but the, the effect on emergency exits is criminal. I know that Carpinteria originally denied the project, and there is a great letter and lots of information on the Carpinteria City website about this, but as the gentleman ahead of me also pointed out, all this is ignored, and we're called to start over again. I agree that being in Sacramento keeps everyone who is really interested in the project from attending. And so if the city council would consider sending a representative, that would be very effective and very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I'd like to just share, we do have that on our agenda, item number 15, which is discussing sending representative to the Coastal, the California Coastal Commission meeting.
And Mayor, we have one more on Zoom.
Great, thank you.
Tristine Rayner. Tristine, go ahead.
It appears that you're discussing the Baylor property right now. I also want to address you about item 15, but I do want to add that the density problem is much worse than anybody who has not been in this area at night. I live in what is known as, well, it's Casitas Village, and the project of 182 new apartment units is adjacent. There is an alley separating us from this large development, which will take over the organic farm that has been there. We drove last night to look for a parking place at eight o'clock. It was as it is every night here. We drove all along Baylor, and we drove all along Villarreal. These are the only public parking places available when people get home from work to park. There was one parking place available. When you add 182 units that will have inadequate parking because they're, they don't have to go through the ordinary permitting process, that is going to make it impossible for the people who already live here to find a parking place. We are largely Hispanic in this complex, and people go to work at the same time, and they come home at the same time in the evening. The units are small, but there are families as large as five, six, seven, I've heard even 10 people living in them. Most of the people work, and they have cars or trucks, a lot of trucks. It is going to create congestion. And one more thing I want you to know about the developer who comes from Orange County, if you look up their rating for their management, and they have apartment complexes all over the country, they have an F-rating from the management in Orange County where their management company for their apartments is located. So you can go on the Chamber of Commerce website, and you will see that they have an F-rating. Their, their units in their apartment buildings, there are complaints there that they haven't been able to get taken down of roaches, of all kinds of pests, of rats, of drugs being used in the hallways, of, at them not returning people's deposits. They are slum lords, and you don't want these people in our, in Carpinteria. They are going to be, they won't even own here because they're not condominiums. These are rentals from people who are going to be here temporarily. And it is going to ruin what has, has been since this place was built in 1972 as worker housing, a harmonious, beautiful place for the Hispanics in our community to live and thrive and raise their kids. And it's just a crime.
Ma'am, your, your time is up. Thank you so much for your comments.
And Mayor, that concludes Zoom comment.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment, and I will ask from, I mean, I would be inclined to receive a presentation from the Housing Authority. It's been some time since I think we've heard from them, but I'll look to my other council members. Looks like everyone's in agreement. Great, thank you. We will now move on to the next item, which is our City Manager's Report.
Yes, Mayor, council, community members, as always, I encourage folks to read through this whole report. We don't cover every item. It's just meant to be, to touch on things that maybe don't rise to the level of an agenda item, but we want to keep people updated on. I'll be joined by several people. I'll start off, and I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Ryan Kents, and then our Community Development Director, Nick Bobroff, our Parks Recreation Community Services Director, Jeanette Gant, and then also our Program Manager, Melissa Briones. We'll all be adding a little something this evening. So my piece is just that I had the opportunity to go and speak to the Morning Rotary Club on Wednesday, the 22nd. I did what was essentially our state-of-the-city sort of financial presentation that we had done, because that was the only item. We had a chance to go into a little more detail, I had a chance to answer more questions. I think what we thought would be like a 15 to 30-minute presentation ended up being about an hour and a half, or something along those lines. But I'm happy to do it, happy to have that discussion with the community members, and so I just, anyone who's listening to this, I want to make myself available in case they would like a presentation at their club, or their, their community, or whatever it may be. Also want to encourage people to go to the city website, because the state-of-the-city is available online in both Spanish and English. On YouTube, there's a link in the City Manager's Report, and then you'll also be able to see other components that, including past City Manager Dave Dersflinger's historical lead-in story to that, to that evening, which is a great thing for anybody to watch. And so as I make my presentations out in the community, I direct people to, to that video for that portion of the presentation. So again, anybody who's interested in me presenting, please reach out. I'll now turn it over to Ryan Kents to give just some brief updates on city employees.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yeah, just one update under Human Resources. Did want to notify the council and the community that we do have a current active part-time recruitment in Parks Recreation and Community Services. It's titled Recreation Leader. We are using this one recruitment to fill two positions, however. So one Recreation Leader vacancy would, would be assigned to City Hall Front Desk, and then the other position is titled a Facility Attendant Position. We're also using this list to establish eligibility list for future recruitments under these similar titles. The Recreation Leader Position provides frontline customer service at City Hall, assists in walk-in visitors, supports program registration and cashiering, and provides general administrative support to the department. The Facility Attendant Position provides onsite support for community facility rentals at the Veterans Memorial Hall, including event setup, customer assistance, and securing the facility after use. Both positions are part-time, the average about 20 hours per week, and we're hoping to do a first review of applications on November 2nd, and we encourage all those who are interested to apply. That's it for me.
I'm now going to turn it over to our Community Development Director, Nick Bobroff, to talk on all things development.
Thanks, Michael. I wanted, wanted to start with one item that didn't make it into the City Manager's Report, but that came up tonight in Susan Allen's comments under, related to the Chevron project. And that had to do with the activity that's going on recently at the Petus Point natural gas facility. So this is a separately-owned facility that sits on the Chevron property. The onshore facilities are owned by the gas company, and then the pipeline that comes into it is owned by, by an oil company. And that was a facility that has since also been shut down, but it used to receive natural gas as a byproduct from one or more of the offshore platforms, and it would get metered and odorized, and then added to the distribution system to supply natural gas to customers throughout Southern California. So the work that's been going on there recently is maintenance work related to the eventual decommissioning of that facility. So Decor, who's the operator of the gas pipeline, was out there a week or so back doing what's called the pigging, where they send a piece of equipment down the pipeline to look for anomalies in the pipeline and understand what condition it was in. And then once that was done, the owner of the pipeline, which is a different oil company, Freeport-McMoran, or FMX for short, they've been out there the last week or so, and they actually purged the line of any remaining natural gas, which gets vented out at the offshore platform. And then they've now filled that line with seawater from the platform, and they had a vacuum truck there the last couple of days to capture any seawater that maybe escaped the pipeline on this end, and eventually just gets sealed off, and it gets left in that condition until Freeport's ready to come back around and go through the permitting process to actually decommission and remove those facilities in their entirety. So that's the work that was going on there the last couple of weeks that Susan Allen had been referring to. Going forward here, over the next month, you're going to continue to see some activity related to the Petus Point facility. In this case, it's going to be Freeport or their consultants doing some additional surveying work in preparation to turn in their application for the actual decommissioning of that facility. So they'll have some biologists and different folks like that walking through Tar Pits Park, going along the route that the gas pipeline takes through the park, to map it, look for its location, you know, kind of get a sense of what's out there in terms of habitat or sensitive resources in the area. I understand they may also be using a drone to do some of that surveying work, and they may be temporarily placing some of those small pin flags out there along the route where they're mapping resources that they find. So we want to get the word out there to folks that, you know, hey, this is known about. The city's granted a license to Freeport and their consultants to do that work. It's short-term, it's non-invasive, and it's in anticipation of the eventual decommissioning of those facilities. Moving on to a couple of the items here in the City Manager's Report. You recall, a month or two back, we briefed the council in a previous City Manager's Report about creating a landing page on our city website where folks could go to learn more information about upcoming proposed housing projects. And we're continuing to keep that, that page updated. We've been actively working on all three of the large housing projects that we currently have in review. That's the 6380 Villarreal, the 588 That's the 6380 Villarreal, the 5885 Carpenter Avenue Project, and the 5115 Ogen Road Project. All of those have recently been resubmitted and either been determined incomplete or currently being reviewed. So we are continuing to post updates to those pages. And as folks are interested in keeping up to date on one or all of those projects, keep checking that webpage for, for the latest. Uh, also coming up next Monday, November 3rd, is our Planning Commission Hearing. We've got one item on that agenda. Uh, it involves remodels and additions to a single-family residence at 748 Maple Avenue. Staff report and agenda will be up on the city website later this week for that item. And then finally, I wanted to uh, circle back around to something that came up at the last City Council Meeting concerning, concerning the establishment of an Affordable Housing Committee. Uh, so I know this has come up several times with your Council and to date, the Council hasn't taken action to say, yes, we want to form this committee, uh, but it, it seems to be a recurring subject. And so I wanted to give a little bit of, of detail in terms of what staff's thinking on it was and then give the Council an opportunity to provide us direction if, if you feel differently. Uh, so in the current work plan, the current strategic plan, uh, the Community Development Department made a commitment to uh, spending some time here and researching different strategies and, and tools and techniques that other jurisdictions are using to either fund affordable housing projects or, where possible even to help produce or facilitate the protection of affordable housing projects. And our intention was after we've had some time to, to gather some of this information about these different strategies, was to culminate in a presentation back to your Council with a menu of options and, and getting some direction from your Council on, you know, which of these are the best fit for Carpinteria and which ones you want us to pursue in a future work plan. And the thinking was, once we've done that research, that might be a good time to uh, bring back consideration of convening uh, an Affordable Housing Committee to help us sift through all these different strategies and, and make recommendations to the whole Council of these are the ones that we like or that we think are the best fit for Carpinteria. So that's been our intention. Um, that being said, we recognize that affordable housing is of importance to the community and importance to your Council. And so if there is interest in forming a committee to help with this work sooner rather than later, um, that's certainly something that we can, we can do and we can help facilitate. We just need some direction from your Council that yes, that's something you want to do and how you envision that working here in the meantime while we're still doing that research. Maybe it's the committee members helping us to gather this information or to get educated on these, on these topics so that when we have uh, the information accumulated and ready to go, we've got committee members that can hit the ground running. So uh, kind of just wanted to put this in here as an update, let you know what our thinking was and give you the opportunity to direct us in a different way if that's, if that's where you want to go with it. And I'll leave it there unless you have any questions.
Great, thank you, yes.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have a question, but I, I would, I would like to see us put it on the agenda because I, I think a, a lot of the council members are interested in, in this and, and I think it's time that the, the City Council take a more active role in rolling this out. So I'd like to see it come to the agenda.
In terms of the timing, I do appreciate the idea of that Director Bobrov mentioned about um, have, allowing their team to gather a lot of the information first. Um, I think as opposed to forming the committee now while they're still figuring out what the roadmap would look like. So that was, that's my only thought is that makes sense to me just in terms of efficiency in terms of the, the committee, once it's formed, having all the information that, that they need to then be discussing. So that, that was just my, my two cents about that.
No, no, I, I totally agree. I, I would just like to, if we're going to do that, I'd like to see some milestone markers, you know, when is that going to happen? We've kind of been waiting for that to happen, so um...
It sounds like that might happen when, when staff is going to come back to the full Council with that kind of menu of options you were mentioning.
I was just, I was questioning when that was.
Right, so in, uh, through the Mayor, Council Member Clark, currently in the strategic plan, I think it has it targeted that we would be making that presentation uh, by the end of the, was it the 26, 27 fiscal year? So giving us, you know, a year or a year and a half here to go out there and do that research, knowing that we're working on a number of other tasks in the meantime.
Uh, Council Member Namor?
Yeah, um, my suggestion would be um, we take this up in January, make sure that we have the information that we have, have a presentation by staff during our strategic planning meeting. Um, once we have the information that has been gathered, we could see if in fact, um, we have enough to go with. But I would recommend that we put this on the um, strategic planning agenda as one of the items and put that more as a priority than not. I think at that time then, we could probably accelerate the plans moving forward, once you know exactly where staff is at.
That's a good idea. I like the idea of it being part of the strategic discussion.
I think, yeah, I would agree with my fellow council members and, and just add that, you know, in our other committee work, a lot of things come up because these are collaborative, regionally specific events. Like, for example, if I'm at an Economic Vitality Meeting, I'm being presented with information that could be beneficial and cut staff's time down if I have that, if there's a place for that information to go. And uh, you know, just knowing that housing is such a top of mind and of utmost importance, I think that what Council Member Clark said is right. We should be having a proactive role in this, so I think in total support of it.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. And then um, I will though ask, um, because it does sound like the Council would like to move forward with the committee, it's just a matter of when is what I'm hearing? So is there any detriment to being able to start the process to get committee members assigned to the committee now? Similar to the Economic Vitality Committee, I think that allowed, um, I think it was Council Member Roy and I and now Julia and I to attend um, REACH conferences so we could gather information as well. And then when we were more organized, then come together with an agenda. So I'm just curious to know if we could save some time if we were to create the committee within the next month or so, so that we were ready to go come January.
Mayor Alarcon, that's kind of what we were thinking of as the, you know, alternative to deferring it until we're ready for it, is if we were to form it now, it might be just helping point council members towards resources and opportunities as they come up to, you know, get educated, get up to speed, help bring information back to the committee and the rest of the Council. So that, that would be kind of the way we think it might operate in the near term if you were to form it now as opposed to waiting till we have that research done.
I'm, I would be inclined to forming it now so that we can get a little bit of a head start.
So um, putting it on the agenda would be the next step?
The, the one concern I would say with, with moving it forward at this time, not having all the information is the fact that we are going to be putting more money, time, and effort onto the staff right now. That, that's my biggest concern. That's why I was thinking if we had time to actually get it organized, we would know financially where we stand as far as support from the staff. Jumping in a little bit earlier, may give us more resources, what, resources, but it may also cost us a little bit more. And we have the, the current team that already is following up on housing. We're getting reports pretty much everywhere we need. So I think um, personally, I would rather see this get planned out so we don't waste time, energy, and resources.
And I, I tend to agree with that as well. I, I like the idea of it being part of, even just the, the formation of the committee being part of that strategic plan discussion in January, just so that at that point, yeah, we do have more of a sense of where city staff is in terms of the types of potential projects that they're thinking about, maybe um, the types of uh, events that might be helpful for committee members to go to. So I, I do agree with you on that, on that, in terms of the timing.
Yeah, I, I don't think we'd be wasting any um, staff resources. I think that it, it's just a matter of um, creating the committee sooner rather than later for an issue that we're gonna have to address regardless.
And necessarily, wouldn't necessarily take any staff time at this point?
No.
Until we actually did got to the uh, strategic planning.
Right.
We just, we would, we would appoint committee members and they could, you know, do some advanced work if they cared to.
Yeah.
We could also do it individually too, if that were the case.
Yeah, I think the problem or that I'm seeing or the challenge is that even though like, for example, I'm on a housing committee or an affordable housing task force, the information doesn't necessarily go anywhere. I mean, we can definitely bring it back to the Council to make a report out, but even those conversations aren't going any further because we're waiting until January for the strategic plan conversation. And I guess I see it as if we're able to create a committee now, that information can now go somewhere and we can at least begin to have record and, and do some additional research. But those are, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I tend to agree with the Mayor here that, you know, this, our ability as City Council Members is to sort of be more dynamic and, you know, further a conversation. And then like what you said, it's like have it go to a place rather than it just being a report that we receive information about. Um, you know, to me, there's no harm in doing that. It's actually just, it's like looking at where we have to go and starting the process of getting there.
So then for clarification then, the agenda item would be just to form the committee? There's no, um, there's no duties associated with it? There's not going to be any sort of um, uh, research being done or anything until we discuss it at the strategic planning meeting in January, is that right?
I'll look to staff, but I mean, I think there would have to be some sort of um, uh, roles and responsibilities we'd need to attribute to any, similar to any of our other committees. But I don't know that we would, uh, I mean, maybe it would just depend on the information that we're able to bring back because of the existing committees that we're already on. So that could potentially create an agenda for us to discuss before January.
That would include staff time then? You're now talking staff time.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think this is something that is really critical in our community and it's...
I'd love to see us get a head start on it, even if it's two months.
I, I tend to disagree with that. I still think we're going to have a lot of changes. We're going to see a lot more resources coming forward towards the first of the year. So again, um, I would still favor having this go through um, Strategic Planning Committee, our planning session. There's a lot of things that are going to be there that we may um, put staff together to do a plan forward and seeing that when it comes January, once they've established goals, objectives, and process, uh, we may need to change that. Um, there again, that's wasting staff time.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh yeah, as, as a first step, so do we, we, do we get regular readouts of the joint, joint affordable housing, the county task force? Is that something where that can maybe be like a first start is, because I don't, I'm not sure who the, the reps on that one are right now, but that could be something kind of like to, to show what council members are bringing back from an existing committee? Um, and we can just see like what that looks like, that information sharing and, and if that helps to direct what that committee would look like? That's one, one idea.
Mayor Alarcon, Council Members, if I could just jump in quickly, I, I just want to um, maybe refocus the discussion, but we, as you know, have not agendized whether or not we should create a committee tonight. So I would recommend that we keep the conversation to whether or not we should agendize this discussion and it's getting a little bit further than that at this point. So trying to bring it back up to high level would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing us back. Um, so on, on, I would be inclined to agendize that item. Clearly, we have some additional discussion to be had, so I would be in agreement with that.
So I'll, I'll make that motion and since, uh, since we're not going to get too far in the weeds, that's, just to, you know, make that motion.
So we have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay, thank you.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
I would be a nay.
Thank you. Are there any other items on the City Manager's Report for discussion?
Yeah, sorry. So next I'll bring up uh, Jeanette Gant, uh, mostly so she's not last, uh, but also so she can give you some important information.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Happy to provide um, just a few updates. There is a lot in there. Um, my team is just continuing to work so hard and really impressed with all that they do for the community. And thank you all for attending um, so many of these events and supporting them. We really appreciate it. Uh, so this coming Saturday, November 1st, at 10:00 AM, AgeWell will host a docent-led tour of the Salt Marsh Nature Park. This guided excursion will begin at the park entrance at Sandy Land Avenue in Ash and will give participants the opportunity to explore the unique ecology and wildlife of the local salt, salt marsh habitat. And on Thursday, November 6th, at 6:00 PM, AgeWell will present Portraits of Life After Service at the Alcazar Theater. This free community event offered in partnership with the SBCC School of Extended Learning will honor veterans and first responders through original photographs, storytelling, and panel discussions. And doors will open at 5:30 and reservations are strongly encouraged at www.thealcazar.org. In partnership with the city's Public Works Sustainability Department or Division, excuse me, the Community Garden will hope, uh, will host the Third Annual Pumpkin Smash, also this Saturday, November 1st, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. This community event promotes the repurposing of used pumpkins to become composted and donated to local farmers for animal feed rather than being sent to the landfill. And this year, we're actually partnering um, with the Future Farmers of America Carpinteria Chapter and sending the pumpkins to them, or they're coming to pick them up, rather. And additionally, the Community Garden's composting systems were recently reworked to improve efficiency and accessibility. And community members can now compost fruit, vegetable, and garden scraps through both ver composting and hot composting drop, uh, drop-off locations. In September, these systems diverted 161 pounds of food and garden waste from the landfill. They did ask and Ruby did weigh all the composting. And those are my updates. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, any questions?
So just to make sure I got it right, the Pumpkin Smash will be at the Community Garden?
Yes, thank you for asking that. Um, yes, Council Member Mayor, through the Mayor, it will be at the Community Garden Saturday. So after you guys went trick-or-treating, um, and you need to get out some of that excess energy on Saturday morning, come on by and smash pumpkins.
Thank you.
Quick question for you, um, any updates on the tomorrow interpretive play area?
Yes, Council Member Namor, through the Mayor, I apologize, I had drafted um, something in writing to include in this week's report and left it in my email rather than sending it through. Um, so I'd planned on uh, including it in the next uh, City Manager's Report, but happy to give you um, the status update. So we're still soliciting bids for work to resurface the playground, um, or the interpretive play area rather. And we have currently, I believe, just one bid that we've been able to, um, that's been sent our way and one bid for the slide replacement. So we're still working on, uh, our Public Works Department is working on soliciting additional bids so we can get competitive pricing for the work.
And I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Um, the garden had held, held their volunteer day um, on Saturday, I think it was. And um, and there was a really good turnout of the community gardeners. So Ruby is doing a really good job in outreach already. I know she just started, but she's, I think she's engaging a lot of the gardeners, a lot um, in a really positive way. So, and, and the gardeners that were there expressed an interest in doing more frequent um, group events at the garden, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, but the staff there at the, Ruby is doing a phenomenal job.
I appreciate that, Vice Mayor Soloceno. Yes, Ruby's revamped or brought back rather the e-newsletter as well for connecting with the gardeners, so we really appreciate all that she's um, doing. She's hit the ground running. So thank you and thanks for joining and volunteering as well.
Thank you.
And last but not least, our Program Manager over Communications, Emergency Management, Jelisa Briones.
Hi, good evening, Council. Um, I have a couple of updates related to Communications, Emergency Management, and also Volunteer Services. Um, so first and foremost, I know City Manager Ramirez also mentioned, but the State of the City Address is now available online um, through our YouTube channel in both English and Spanish. Um, so we did um, push that out on the city website newsletter and on the city's social media channels as well. Um, we've also worked with TVSB to create um, kind of a, a snippet of the City Manager's Finance Overview as well. Um, so we'll have that available online very shortly um, for folks that just kind of want to um, just get straight to the nitty-gritty and learn just about um, city finances, since we've have heard a couple of requests for that. Um, and again, that is also available in English and in Spanish. Um, secondly, um, for Emergency Management, this past week, we had the Wildfire Safety Community Meeting at Girls Inc. in collaboration with Southern California Edison. Um, and um, I attended along with Vice Mayor Soloceno. Um, and we provided a couple of, oh, Vice Mayor Soloceno provided opening remarks and also emphasized the importance of community preparedness, including our CERT team. Um, and just really provided an overview of different um, opportunities that the Emergency Preparedness Program has here at the city. Um, and then we also um, were able to distribute a couple of pamphlets and things like that, informational materials to um, participants. Um, it wasn't that great of a attendance, um, but it's okay. The folks that did attend um, learned a lot and it was a really valuable discussion. a lot, and it was a really valuable discussion. In terms of city volunteers, so this past, not this week, but last week, we had our annual city volunteer banquet. So we hosted volunteers from Agewell, the library, and Host as well. We had over 60 folks in attendance, which was awesome, over at the Veterans Hall. And I, along with our PRCS team, including Jenna, Tori, Jeanette, and Eric, and Tara, and a few others, who I'm blanking right now on their names, really kind of put our resources together to put a really nice event on for all of our city volunteers who just do so much for this community. I emphasized during the event, but I'll emphasize here now, there's just no way that we would be able to offer the breadth of programming and opportunities that we have here at the city without their support. So we're really, really thankful, and we're really looking forward to having another event next year around the same time in the fall. With that, the Host season ended very strongly. So for those who just need a refresher, so Host runs from Memorial Day all the way to Labor Day. Host volunteers are out there Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, all day long, really engaging with the community, including all of our visitors that come. They're out by the visitor's kiosk, just directing folks with a myriad of questions that they receive, including, you know, what trail should I go on next, or what restaurant should I hit, what's so special about Carpenteria, where can I learn more? Really, they get just all sorts of questions, and they really do an excellent job in really promoting civic engagement, but also just the amazing resources that we have here within the city. This year, we had 51 Host volunteers and welcomed a total of 3,648 visitors from 27 different states, the furthest being New Hampshire. And we also had a ton of international visitors as well, which was really neat to hear, from 10 different countries, including Ireland, New Zealand, France, China, and many others. It was just really neat to gather everybody. This is my first Host season, and I learned a lot. I just really want to give a shout out to the Host Steering Committee, and in particular, Donna Jordan, who does, just goes above and beyond really supporting city staff, and also just the Host Volunteer Program as a whole, to really ensure that this program continues running so strongly. And then lastly, we've been working, Stefan from Public Works and I have been working with the Downtown Tea Business Advisory Board. So this year, they are bringing back their Downtown Trick or Treat event on, this Friday, actually, from 3:30 to 5:00 in the Downtown Tea. So city staff, along with folks from the Downtown Tea Advisory Board, got together and distributed flyers. They actually went door-to-door this past week, and we were able to hit most of the businesses in that area. We'll have a city table there as well in front of the visitor's kiosk again, just offering, you know, city resources, but also just really engaging with the community and handing out candy. So you may see some of these, and I apologize, I don't have one for each of you, but these are the new flyers that we did this year. And then folks that are participating will have this orange flyer posted in front of their business. And so that's how the community will know that they are participating. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Yes.
Good question on that one, Jalisa. Have you considered, actually, with these special events, using the banners on the light poles for that instead of, I would say, just the same ones going up all the time?
Yeah, that's definitely something that we've considered. I think there's some conversation too with Public Works. I think we need to get some sturdier pole, I know right now we use two trees, but we want to make sure moving forward. I know there's discussion with potentially adding to, you know, sturdier poles to make sure, you know, in the case of strong winds or anything like that, that we move forward in kind of a safer way to display the banners. But Councilmember, that's an excellent point. That's definitely something we're looking into in the future.
Sounds good. There are lighter materials I see used in different cities now where the material is extremely light. It's almost like a, like a mesh material. You may want to consider that, because right now they're using the heavy canvas, coated canvas, which is plastic. You may want to give away with that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And mayor, that concludes my report. Although, in terms of expectations with bringing the housing, potential housing committee report back, I know that we have a very, very packed agenda for our next meeting that includes a break for dinner and those sorts of things. So I'm hoping to be able to bring that back at the first, or no, actually, I guess would be second meeting in November. And in the meantime, I'll work with Nick and his team to get out any information, housing information that we have to the entire council, to see if we can drum up any interest ahead of naming who might, you know, if we do approve it, anyone who would be assigned to that committee. So we'll get out information to the full council as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Comments again? First of all, just for disclosure, I was not at the Carpenteria Morning Meeting that Michael was speaking at. I was actually in New Mexico doing rotary work. So no disclosures to deal with there. I think we're in good shape. There's no conflict. The second one is, we do have a joint task force housing representative and alternate. I'd like to see how that is going to fit into the plans also, because I think that's going to be a crucial element. We talk about getting resources, but we already have a committee there, or a team there that's working on it. So we may be overlapping duties. The other thing, you guys already passed it, but when we're looking at this, we're only talking maybe one or two meetings more before we start jumping into January. So anyways, there was my comments.
Great, thank you. And I just want to confirm that we've agendized the topic itself, so, in terms of our action. So I'll go ahead and open up public comment for the city manager's report. I do not have any speaker slips. Do we have anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Okay, I will go ahead and officially close public comment. And we will move on to the next item, which is public comment on matters not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker slips? Okay, Mr. Delgado, welcome.
Rahela Delgado, Carpenteria resident. The school board approved a local bond, and I think that these are the reasons for that. I've been there for many years, and this is what I see. Number one, the school district has not paid its money judgment, its, any money judgment. Number one, 4.2 millions for the sex abuse cases of the 70s. Number two, three and a half million dollars versus the union president, E.J. Hoshner, on legal fees. None. And number three, 100,000 settlement for special education cases, lawsuits. Number four, they have more legal lawsuits facing them. And those are facts. The school board approved on October 14, 2025, a local bond for property owners. Remember, we're still paying the 1995 bond. 2014, the Measure U bond, and another bond. School board approved it, but it needs 55% of people's approval. Now, they also have a $42 million budget. Number one, they have solid reserves per Assistant Superintendent CAF. And number two, every, every Measure U project has been completed. Number three, they still have 6.2 million dollars for future projects per Assistant Superintendent CAF on August.
Excuse me, on this, you're talking about school district.
Yes.
The school district is outside of our jurisdiction. And according to this public comment, this would not be allowed.
But that bond has to do with real property, and real property falls under the city's jurisdiction, correct?
I, I'm going to interject for just a moment. I appreciate your comment. I'm going to look to our council. My understanding is this is really public comment, and the individual can share what they'd like. Is that...
Thank you, Mayor Alarcon, council member. So it is public comment, and I'll just read from the agenda here, on matters not otherwise on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. So it really depends on, it's, it's very difficult halfway through a comment to determine whether or not the public comment is going, is within the subject matter, just, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the, of the city. So maybe one recommendation would be to ask the public commenter to make sure that it ties back into the city's jurisdiction.
And, and so he did share it had to do with the real property. So would that fall within? I mean...
It's very broad, Mayor Alarcon, council member. So it's, a lot is left up to discretion. But I think just a reminder to the public commenter that this is a time for public comment before the city council for all matters within the city's jurisdiction, and to make sure that there's that tie.
Okay. So we did, I want to ensure that he gets his full three minutes allotted. I'm not exactly sure when we may have stopped the clock, but I want to ensure that he gets the rest of his time.
Mayor, he used up his three minutes.
Prior to us interjecting?
Yes.
He did, okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Delgado, for your comments.
Because it has to do with property tax. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any other speaker slips. Do you have any, if not anyone on Zoom?
Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Okay. I will go ahead and officially close public comment. And we will move on to the consent calendar, and I will open up public comment on any of the items listed under consent calendar.
And mayor, we do not have any, any folks on Zoom wishing to make comment.
Great. So we do not have any speaker slips, and we do not have anyone on Zoom. I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held October 13th, to receive and file the expenditures for the period beginning October 6th and ending October 17th, 2025, to receive and file the report of contracts executed by the city manager for the period of September 2nd through October 6th, 2025, to receive and file the monthly city treasurer's report on compliance with statements of safekeeping and investment of public funds for September of 2025, to receive and file the quarterly review of the pension stabilization trust, to adopt resolution number 6420, receiving and filing the city's investment policy as part of the annual review required by state law.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. The next item on our agenda is number 12, which is authorize the purchase of 35 standardized trash receptacles from forms plus surfaces in an amount not to exceed
Mayor, I don't know if you have opportunity for just a short break, but we're, our presenter is going to be arriving here shortly, but we can wait, or if you'd like to take a short break.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take a 10-minute break.
Okay.
Thank you.[1423.61]
Good evening, council. Tonight I'll be providing some background on the Public Works Trash Can Replacement Program and recommending the authorization to purchase thirty-five standardized trash receptacles from the selected vendor Forms and Surfaces. The standardized trash cans are shown here on the screen. I'll describe this model in more detail shortly. In early two thousand and twenty-two, the city began an effort to standardize public trash cans. The goal was to replace aging and damaged units, improve collection efficiency for our waste hauler E.J. Harrison and Sons, and create a consistent look throughout the city. In April of two thousand and twenty-two, staff presented the proposed receptacle design to the Architectural Review Board. The board unanimously supported standardizing trash cans citywide and approved the urban renaissance model from Forms and Surfaces as the city's standard. Before we take a closer look at the selected model, here are some examples of the aging and damaged receptacles currently in use in Carpinteria. The true, two trash cans in the middle are uncovered, which allows rainwater to collect inside, making them heavy and difficult to empty, empty during rainy season. The concrete can on the right does not have a side opening door, which also makes collection difficult for our waste hauler. The can on the left is in relatively good shape, but the cover on this model is prone to bending as people try to retrieve bottles from inside or force in oversized items. This is the standardized model we have begun to install across Carpinteria, the urban renaissance litter and recycling receptacle from Forms and Surfaces. Each unit has a thirty-six gallons, um, capacity and is constructed from corrosion-resistant stainless steel powder coated in Carpinteria green. The bins include integrated dome lids to protect from weather and animals, side opening doors compatible with our waste hauler's requirements, and are durable, repairable, and built for long-term use. These bins have dual openings, one for trash and one for bottles and cans, but a single streamliner, meaning both trash and recyclables are collected together. The waste is then taken to Gold Coast Recycling Transfer Station, where recyclables are sorted after collection. This approach is used in public areas because it is more effective than relying on the public to correctly separate trash and recyclables. By using combined receptacles, the city can streamline collection, improve recycling recovery, and reduce costs by only purchasing one unit instead of two separate bins. It's also worth noting that the vendor Forms and Surfaces operates a design studio right here in Carpinteria. Standardizing the city's trash cans has several benefits, including uniformity in design and appearance. Having the same style of bins in public spaces makes them easier to spot and helps the, the, helps our public spaces look more cohesive. Uh, improves, uh, collection efficiency for our waste hauler. All cans open the same way, are easily recognized by collection crews, and reduce time and effort during pickup. And reduced maintenance and replacement costs. The standardized cans are built to last with readily accessible replacement parts and surfaces that can be repowder coated to look new. Here's our program progress so far. Since two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-eight receptacles have been purchased and installed in the public right-of-way funded through the available Public Works budget. To date, none of these receptacles have required any maintenance or replacement parts. The relatively high per-unit cost has limited full replacement in a single phase. The five percent increase in the AB nine thirty-nine solid waste franchise fee approved earlier this year secure dedicated funding for solid waste program operations, including this replacement program. For the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six, Public Works has allocated thirty thousand dollars for park trash can replacements, fifty thousand dollars for right-of-way can replacements, and four thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars for trash cans for the Franklin Creek Trail Improvement Project. This totals eighty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Here's a bit of a cost breakdown of these trash cans. Um, pre-tax and shipping per unit is one thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars. This includes the receptacle, the liner, the custom powder coating, and an anchor kit. Um, including tax and shipping, the total for one unit is two thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. The total cost for thirty-five units is eighty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. Staff used Omnia Partners, a cooperative purchasing organization, to select the vendor. This purchase complies with the city's procurement policy and meets formal bid requirements through cooperative purchasing. Omnia Partners contracts are completely, uh, competitively solicited by a lead public agency, publicly awarded, and made available nationwide, ensuring that the city receives the best possible pricing. To summarize, this purchase continues the city's multi-year effort to improve waste collection efficiency, enhance appearance of public spaces, and reduce long-term maintenance costs. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the purchase of thirty-five standardized trash receptacles from Forms and Services in an amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-four sets. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions?
Just two quick questions. Um, what is the general lifespan of those, uh, trash cans, the new version?
Yes, thank you, um, for your question through the mayor. Um, I don't have a concrete answer on exactly how long these trash cans last, but they're made to withstand weather and are available for long-term use. And because these can be, uh, repowder coated, that extends their life, life quite by a lot. And, um, they also have readily available replacement parts, so these cans will be lasting a lot longer than the current cans that we have in a public right-of-way. So they're here to stay for a long time. And like I mentioned in the presentation, um, the trash cans we've ordered and used since two thousand and twenty-two have not required any maintenance so far, and they still look brand new.
Great, and then my other question is, just to clarify, so are the new trash cans going to be phased in, like, as the other ones break down? Or are they, as soon as the new ones arrive, are they going to be, um, implemented?
So we have plenty of trash cans that are ready to be replaced here in Carpinteria already. So we have, um, prioritized cans that need to be replaced. So we'll prioritize those. Um, but yes, they're meant to replace trash cans, um, replace trash cans that are already in use in the public right-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just have one quick question, and maybe it was in there, I was trying to remember, but, uh, this is a multi-year program to replace the trash cans. Are there, will there be another wave of replacements, or will this conclude that project?
Thank you for your question through the mayor. Um, this is a multi-year project, so in the next, next fiscal year, we have the same budget allocated, so we'll be able to purchase more trash cans. Um, we have a rough estimate of how many trash cans we have in the city. Um, according to our franchise agreement, we have about a hundred and fifty in the public right-of-way and about sixty-four in parks. So it'll take a few years before we can replace all of them. Um, but we're slowly working towards it, and we're also working on potentially mapping some of the trash cans we have, so we can more easily prioritize which ones need to be replaced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and open up public comment. I do not have any speaker slips. Uh, do we have anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for final comments, discussion, or motion.
Um, I'll move to authorize the purchase of thirty-five trash receptacles in an amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-four cents.
We have a first.
Second.
We have a first and a second. A roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Solarsino?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Nomura?
Aye.
And Mayor Alarcon?
Aye. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Item number thirteen is next, which is appointments to the Central Coast Community Energies Policy Board and Operations Board.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, back in two thousand and nineteen, the city council became a member of the Monterey Bay Community Power Authority Community Choice Aggregation Program, which is now known as Central Coast Community Energy, or 3CE, which I'll be referring to it to as, uh, for the rest of this presentation. Uh, 3CE entities purchase and/or generate electrical energy and provide it to customers within their jurisdictions, while the existing investor-owned utility continues to provide billing, physical transmission, and distribution services. The 3CE is governed by a policy board and an operations board. The policy board is comprised of elected officials and provides guidance and approval in areas of strategic planning, a passage of budget and customer rates, and large capital expenditures outside of the typical power procurement required to provide electrical service. Uh, the operations board is made up of city managers and county administrative officers, or their designees, and provides oversight and support to the chief executive officer of 3CE on matters pertaining to the provision of electrical service to customers in the region, uh, focusing on the routine day-to-day operations of 3CE. Uh, under the Joint Powers Authority, jurisdictions with populations fewer than fifty thousand are required to partner and share one seat on each of the two boards between them. Uh, the sharing agencies include the cities of Carpinteria and Goleta. Uh, representatives in shared board seats shall serve two-year terms of office, but may be reappointed by their appointing party. Uh, appointment responsibility rotates every two years between the parties. And let me bring up this one slide here. Okay, so before you, um, it's kind of the history of all the various, um, since the inception back in two thousand and nineteen of the policy board, uh, primary members and alternate members, as well as the operations board, primary and alternate members. And so for the current term, that's going to be expiring on, uh, November thirtieth of this year. The, for the policy board, the city of Goleta is the primary for the policy board, and Carpinteria is the alternate, with Councilmember Nomura being in that position. And then for the operations board, it's reversed. So whereas the city of Carpinteria is the, um, primary member, and Goleta is the alternate member on the operations board. And again, that's, uh, covered by City Manager Ramirez. So for the next two-year period, going from two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-seven, again, that flips, so Carpinteria becomes the primary. And so your council will be selecting, uh, one of your, uh, council members to represent the primary seat on the policy board. And then just to appoint, uh, City Manager Ramirez on the operations board as the alternate member. And that's before you tonight, and if you have any questions, let me know. That concludes my report.
Do we have any questions for staff?
one of your councilmembers to represent the primary seat on the policy board. And then just to appoint City Manager Ramirez on the operations board as the alternate member. And that's before you tonight, and if you have any questions, let me know. That concludes my report.
Do we have any questions for staff?
I have a question. Do we know when the meetings occur, at what time, and the frequency of the meetings?
I believe they're either monthly, I think. I'd have to check. I've got that information back at my desk, but I can report back.
Great. Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, I will go ahead and open up public comment. I do not have any speaker slips.
And mayor, we have no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and officially close public comment, bring it back to the council to see if there is any interest. Oh, we have a public commenter? No, okay. Looks like we'll get that information. Okay, great.
Yeah, if you just wait momentarily, mayor, or if you...
I don't know, Councilmember Nomura, I'm not sure if you've had an active stint on that policy board yet, but do you recall?
It's every other month, because we rotate with the policy board with them, with the other board, the operating board.
And your location?
Six times a year. Most of them have been done in the past. They've been remote. Otherwise, they do rotate, generally speaking. 80% of them are actually in Monterey where headquarters are at.
Okay, and then do you recall the time?
The time, it usually starts about 9:00, 10:00 o'clock in the morning and goes through about 2:00 or 3:00.
Okay, and we're going to also get confirmation of that from Clerk's Desk for our meetings occur sometimes more regularly, and they're usually midday. For us, on our end, on the operations side, we have to go to an approved remote location. And I'm not sure if it's the same for the policy board, but one of those approved locations is the county office. And so I would go to the county and participate remotely there. I couldn't participate remotely, say, from my office. So one of the things to consider, Councilmember Nomura, did you have the same, where you had to participate from a certain location?
We have, but I've been the alternate now for two years. Prior to that, we usually ended up being live, and it was usually in Monterey where I was at. Prior to that was COVID, so we had two years where we ended up going all remote.
Right, that's what I was thinking, actually, as you were asking that question.
And we were able to do remote, well, back in COVID time, from our houses even. So we didn't have to be at a specific location.
Okay, and then we'll also reconfirm that.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Councilmember Nomura, that was very helpful.
All right. Thank you for your patience. So it looks like for the policy board, of course, I have here is the 2023 schedule, so things may have changed since then. But it looked like a policy board met in February, June, and September. Operations met more frequently January, March, April, May, August, September, October, and November. And that's all I have in that regard.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the council and see if there's any interest in joining this committee.
I'd be interested in continuing.
Just confirming, is there anything?
No, no, I just shared that with staff. This was the most recent email I received from 3CE. They usually meet quarterly on our end of it, sometimes six times a year for the operations board.
Great, thank you.
And there are also occasional special meetings. Some of them require you to be live.
Great, okay. So we have Councilmember Nomura who's still interested. Is there anyone else? Okay.
I'm interested in Councilmember Nomura being interested.
Excellent. Is that an official motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a first.
A second.
And we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, mayor, I didn't catch the second.
Monica.
Councilmember Solarsano.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Nomura, for representing us. The next item on our agenda is number 14, which is consider approval of the First Amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement and Authorization of a One-Time Bonus.
Apologies, Mayor Alarcon, councilmembers. I'm happy to present this this evening. So tonight, we will be considering approval of a First Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement and Authorization of a One-Time Bonus. So Mr. Ramirez, Michael Ramirez, was appointed as the city manager to the city of Carpinteria on November 27, 2023. His current employment agreement has a four-year term that ends, I believe, on November 27, 2027. The terms of his employment agreement have not been altered or modified since the date of his hire. And his employment agreement also states a goal of the council to provide performance evaluations on an annual basis. So we're about almost two years into his tenure as the city manager, and we recently, the city manager recently finished his first full 360 performance evaluation. Those discussions and the evaluation was conducted on September 25, and then again on October 13. As part of that process, the council requested a compensation comparison to be put together, and the results of that study is included in the staff report. But based on that study, we did find that the city managers, both base salary and total pay, were at the low end of the range for local jurisdictions and other similarly sized municipalities. So the other thing that I would like to highlight is that Mr. Ramirez's employment agreement does state that he is not entitled to cost-of-living adjustments or COLA adjustments that are often given to other employees, but that his base salary may be modified either by raise or reduction at the sole discretion of the city council. And often, that would occur in conjunction with a performance evaluation. So as you can see in the staff report, we put together a First Amendment for Mr. Ramirez's employment agreement. And the First Amendment is proposing two main changes. So one, there would be a proposed, there's a proposed 5% increase in base pay, which would increase the city manager's current salary from $225,000 to $236,250. And then there'd be an increased amount provided to his housing assistance. There would be a $6,000 annual increase to his housing assistance. So it would go from $24,000 annually to $30,000 annually. In addition to those two proposed amendments, there's also a proposal to award the city manager a one-time performance bonus of $5,000 in consideration of his performance over the past years and also for the fact that this is his first review since he took the position as the city manager. The other terms of his current employment agreement do not change and would remain in full force and effect. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. Otherwise, you will be able to find both the draft of the First Amendment as attachment A to your staff report and then the original City Manager Employment Agreement as attachment B.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, no questions. I will go ahead and open up public comment. Do we have any speaker slips?
Mayor, we do not.
Okay, and do we have anyone on Zoom?
And we have no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for any final comments, discussion, and/or a motion.
I'll move to authorize the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement between the city of Carpinteria and Michael Ramirez, and to approve a one-time performance bonus for the city manager in the amount of $5,000.
A second.
Great, we have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Solarsano?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Nomura?
Aye.
And Mayor Alarcon?
Aye.
Great, thank you. The next item on our agenda is item number 15, which is to authorize a member of the city council and the city manager to present in-person public comment on behalf of the council at the November 6, 2025 meeting of the California Coastal Commission regarding the rezoning of three sites in the unincorporated Carpinteria Valley to multifamily residential use. Approve a budget appropriation for the travel expenses of two city representatives to attend the meeting in person and provide direction to city staff on a proposed comment letter to the CCC regarding the county rezoned sites.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. So this item is a request that the council authorize one of your members and the city manager to attend the November 6 Coastal Commission hearing in Sacramento. The purpose is to provide public comment on behalf of the city regarding the county's proposed rezoning of the three sites along our northern boundary. And I have a map up here showing the three sites in green. The county is seeking to rezone these sites from agricultural and single-family to multifamily residential to meet its housing element programs. And we were surprised to see that Coastal Commission staff is recommending approval of all three rezones, even though the proposals do appear to conflict with several key coastal act policies. In fact, the rezonings would convert active agricultural land and move the longstanding urban-rural boundary and provide for several hundred new housing units directly adjacent to the city. We're concerned that this could undermine agricultural preservation goals and place additional strain on city infrastructure and services. So staff is preparing a formal comment letter to the Coastal Commission and welcomes council direction on key points to include. And with that, staff requests your direction, travel authorization, and selection of the council member who would attend the hearing. And we are available for questions you may have. And I do have a couple more maps added here, too, to show you real quick. This is just another view of the three sites at our city border. And then this also shows where the sites are in relation to your council districts. They are adjacent to three different districts.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Question? Councilmember Clark?
Thank you so much. We had the Office of the First District Supervisor report to us tonight that the Baylor project was not in the appeal zone. Do we know the status of the Van Wengerton project's probably not also in the appeal zone? Would that be correct?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Clark. I don't know, I apologize. I don't know what the county's rules are exactly, but Van Wengerton 1 and 2 may be in the appeals zones. And the reason I say that is Van Wengerton 2, which is the site across the street from the high school, shares a boundary with Franklin Creek, so that may put that site into the Coastal Commission appeals jurisdiction. And then similarly, Van Wengerton 1 backs up to the Church of the Nazarene, which was the site of the approved Villarreal Hotel project. And you recall, there's a drainage feature on that site that had previously been designated as a wetland and then re-designated as a creek feature and had previously been treated by the Coastal Commission as being a creek for the purposes of appeals jurisdiction. So it may bring that one as well into the appeals jurisdiction, but it's a little bit uncertain at this point for that particular site.
Okay. I mean, I just asked that question because I was kind of shocked to hear that. I mean, you know, we're going to end up owning all these projects, and it's more than a couple hundred. I think it's easily 500 units in total. And so, I mean, it seems like our only bite at the apple is to go to Sacramento.
Yeah, just to speak to the numbers there for a moment. The Coastal Commission staff report had come up with a total between the three sites that the three sites combined could yield up to 634 housing units. Neither Mindy or I could make heads or tails of how they did the math on some of those numbers. The math isn't mathing for us. When we take the Gross Acreage, which is what the county ordinance says it would be based upon, and use their minimum densities, we got 635 units upwards to 883 units. So, you know, several hundred units in addition to what the Coastal Commission is suggesting would be yielded across the three sites.
There's a somewhat related question then. In terms of this being the only bite at the apple, I did want to ask, how much communication has the city staff done to Coastal Commission with concerns about these rezones? Because from what I recall, there's been a lot already. So it's not like the city has been quiet on this up until this last point. So are you aware of the ballpark number of either letters or outreach efforts or anything like that that's been done about these rezones?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor and through the mayor. Prior to 2023, there was a number of letters between the city and the county just regarding the Redtail Baylor development. In early 2023, that is when the county began publishing its draft housing element and showing those sites. And that's when we began commenting on these rezones. So we provided two letters from your council during that draft update, and then another one during the EIR period, and then one to the Planning Commission hearing and one to the board hearing. So we've tried to assert our position at every step. This would be the first time we communicate with the Coastal Commission, as it's really the first opportunity.
Great. I just wanted to reiterate for the public so that they're well aware, a reminder of the fact that the city has been vocal about concerns with both the Redtail project and then the other rezones that are proposed.
And just to clarify or build on that, Coastal Commission should be well aware of our position because all the letters we submitted to the county as part of their housing element rezon process were then made part of the administrative record that was forwarded on to Coastal Commission when they applied with them for these rezones. And we've had a number of email exchanges with Coastal Commission staff over the last 18 months as well, reminding them that this is of interest to us, sharing our concerns, and so forth.
And then, given the fact that it sounds like the Coastal Commission is recommending approving these rezones under standards that maybe don't gel with decisions they've made before, how does that potentially factor into any kind of hope we have of making a difference? Because I think, to me, it's striking that it sounds like their decision is not even based on their own, like their existing legislation or previous decisions they've made.
We would agree with you there, Vice Mayor. And I think that helps confirm some of the key points we want to make in our letter and in our verbal comments to the commission. I don't know what kind of hope that means we have, but it does mean that we can certainly clearly state... clearly state that it not only conflicts with their own policies, it conflicts with what they've directly told the city about our rezones and developments. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of things I think we can point out here.
Great, thank you.
And if I may, my, my comment, blast bite at the apple, was not referring to staff but to the Coastal Commission members itself. They, all our letters, which I've been involved in, I knew they were happening, were, were sent to the staff. So this is like how to have a, you know, a person-to-person communication.
But it does sound like Director Balroff said that the Coastal Commission received the letters, too, as part of the communication process?
So, just to clarify, Vice Mayor Solarsino, so they are made part of the administrative record, which is, Councilmember Clark mentioned, goes to the staff. The actual commissioners, you know, can, can request access to those. I don't know to what degree the individual commissioners dive into the, the whole administrative record. I would assume that it's not too dissimilar from the council, that it varies from person to person depending on their, their interest or bandwidth to, to get into the weeds on any particular item.
But there's also, there's also been a change in, in commission members.
Right, and so this-
Quite a frequent.
And so this may speak to, you know, part of what Vice Mayor Solarsino was asking about is, right, historically, Coastal Commission's taken a very consistent stance that they're wanting to protect agriculture in the coastal zone and, and weren't really looking to, you know, in the case of Carpinteria, for example, move that urban-rural boundary under most any circumstances. And I think now, given the statewide housing crisis, maybe we're seeing that position change a little bit or soften, and I think now the question comes down to is, you know, across the Commission as a whole, where do the individual commissioners land on that issue? There's certainly some on there that are taking a more pro-housing develop, pro-housing stance and might, and might look at this favorably or as something that needs to be done to help address the statewide housing crisis. Maybe some others are kind of more still in the, you know, quote-unquote, "old-school" philosophy of Coastal Commission and, and might not, you know, be as favorable to this, to this proposal. So I unfortunately don't have a good read on where individual commissioners land on this. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. One other consideration, or I would say concern, that council should have in mind is that this represents less than half of their total housing that was originally proposed for adjacent to Carpinteria. They were looking at as many as 1,400 in the Carpinteria Valley, so this may just be a start of that one. I bring this forward because being proactive now means you have to be extremely proactive in the future, too. It's just, not just this one. So it's going to be a tough, tough road to follow, and if that happens, I can, I took a look at the numbers when we had our housing element along with the county, their proposals or, I would say, planning of the housing, their housing element, we could potentially double the size of Carpinteria with the housing changes, so say we do all we can, everything we can to try and protect what we have.
Mayor, if I could add, so I won't claim to know everything that was in the letters that we've sent, and so if I miss something, feel free to add, but I know that we've, to this point, just had an opposition, right, a flat-out opposition to the rezones. As we discuss the talking points this evening, we can maintain that, just straight opposition to the rezones, but another thing that we could consider is if we understand that staff has recommended these sites for approval and it's headed that direction, you'll have an opportunity to talk about some, what the primary concerns are, potentially staff or whichever council member attends. We can still reiterate our opposition, but then speak specifically to some primary concerns that we'd like them maybe to address prior. If they're going to approve this, these things, we want them to address our primary concerns here. It's a slightly different approach, and I know it's one that, that when you're hoping they don't rezone at all, it's not really a stance that you take because you're just hardlining it, but realizing that we're, to this point, we do have an option to stick with that strategy or to look at a little bit more of a nuanced position as, as we make our comments. And we could have several folks make comments, including those that are there in person as well as staff that are here participating remotely, and I think those talking points are really sort of the meat of this conversation and understanding what would be our, our best strategy in this process.
Great, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, real quick, manager brings up a good point. Michael did talk about that. I would say that one of the benefits we could have is that the representative not speak just on behalf of themselves but also in the council, which could include, I would say, letters that could be read during that time. I don't know what the time limit is for presentations, but that would be one of the other considerations. If you show a unanimous front, that's going to be substantially different than one person doing the voice spoken.
And Councilmember Nemiro, through the mayor, that is, that's why we definitely agree with that, is why we sped to get this on the agenda so that the council could approve whatever representative is sent to speak on, on behalf of the entire council if you desire.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. We have a speaker slip coming.
We have a number.
Thank you. Carla, Carl Sonken? Okay, I'm not seeing them.
Mayor, it looks like he's online.
Okay.
So when we get to that part.
Yeah, exactly. Tristan Rayner?
She as well.
Okay, great. Kristi Boyd.
That's me.
Welcome.
My name is Kristi Boyd, and I strongly support staff's recommendation to send a city representative to the California Coastal Commission meeting on, on November 6 in Sacramento. The City of Carpinteria has been steadfast in maintaining good planning objectives and responding to the 2,500 of us that have signed our names in opposition to the conversion of the organic farmland to multiple apartment units. Our city planners have consistently answered our many questions and helped to clarify some of the language in these legal documents. While we understand the need for housing in this area, the idea that the county is trying to undermine our well-planned historical urban-rural boundary is the opposite of good planning. A strong urban-rural boundary separates high-density urban usage from agricultural practices. It is key to maintaining our agricultural heritage while providing appropriate housing sites. The destruction of this urban-rural boundary has the potential to continue the slippery slope to move urban uses pushed up against agricultural uses. This is inappropriate and dangerous. Farmers have the right to farm, which can mean using herbicides, pesticides, and fertilizers that are often toxic. Butting these practices up against high-density housing is foolhardy. The seven acres in question is located at the north end of Baylor Avenue and sits right on the line that separates the City of Carpinteria from the County of Santa Barbara. If this new land use designation is approved, the county will reap the much-sought-after RENA numbers with a massive housing development, while the city will foot the bill for all the services needed: police, fire, schools, road maintenance, parks, and more. I urge you to follow staff's recommendation to send a city representative to Sacramento to plead your case, our case, in person. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I do not have any other speaker slips, and we'll go ahead and move over to Zoom.
All right, Mayor, so our first Zoom speaker is Mike Wondolowski. Mike, go ahead.
All right, thank you. This is Mike Wondolowski, speaking for Carpinteria Valley Association, and we, we also strongly support the city sending representatives to Sacramento for this hearing. It's, there is cost there, and there's a non-trivial amount of, of time required, but it is time and money well-invested. It's, it's very much worth it and very important for the city to take this action. We do want to extend a, a thank you to staff. Both Mindy and Nick have really been, done an excellent job identifying key issues throughout the process here and, and representing the, the city and the people of the Carpinteria well to the county and now in preparation for the Coastal Commission testimony. The staff report highlights the various key issues, and the one thing I want to emphasize here as being super-important, probably the single most important issue, is the urban-rural boundary. Staff report notes that the Coastal Commission staff report asserts that rezoning the Van Wengerton properties would make the boundary more stable and a more permanent line to urban development than the existing boundary that, that has been established. And we fully agree with staff's stated, uh, city staff's stated concern that if the Commission is able to justify moving the longstanding urban-rural boundary and rezoning agricultural properties in the coastal zone, that is opening the door and setting the precedent for further urban sprawl as we advance through piecemeal conversion through future RENA cycles. In the next eight-year cycle, the county's going to be back at the, back at our boundaries again, saying, here's some more puzzle pieces that obviously need to be added to make it an even better urban boundary. If you look at the map that's in the staff report and you look at the, the jigsaw puzzle pieces of the different properties, there is no single obvious line that makes a beautiful straight rectangle around Carpinteria. It's all jigsaw puzzle pieces. You can always justify adding just one more because we need the housing, and it doesn't really hurt the boundary that much. The Van Wengerton parcel by the high school is frankly an absurd addition, saying that that's a better boundary than Wengerton 2. So, city manager suggested that the council identify the primary concerns. We strongly urge you to identify the single primary concern as maintaining the urban-rural boundary as a longstanding, important planning boundary that needs to be there and be accounted for and counted on by property owners and by speculators so that we don't have a bunch of ag properties getting speculative purchases from people who want to grow condos in the next county eight-year RENA cycle. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, Mayor, the next Zoom speaker is Gary Campopiano. Gary, go ahead.
I would just like to support the city recommendation to send delegates to Sacramento for this hearing. It's critical to our maintaining our small-town charm. These growth-inducing rezones are inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next Zoom speaker is Trystine Rayner. Trystine, go ahead.
Actually, I got a chance to speak with you before, and I now want to encourage you to send representatives to the Coastal Commission. I rechecked, and Redtail, if you look up Redtail Management, which is the same address as the developer Redtail, Redtail Management complaints, if you do a search, I found that they did get their F-rating removed. They've replaced it with that they are not a member of the Better Business Bureau, but the complaints are still there, hundreds of them, and, and I urge you to see this as really a crisis for our community. Nobody recognizes how dense we already are in this area. It is the freeway exit and entrance onto Baylor. If you add 182 units here, at the same time, everybody's leaving for work, everybody's coming back, there will be backups on the freeway, especially because there is a crossing, a bridge on Baylor, so that everybody who lives across from the, the freeway crosses in order to get to the, the bluffs there. Everybody crosses, there are no signals, there is only one lane, you have to step off if two people are going the, the other way. All day long, people are taking their dogs across, they're making good use of the bluffs, but when you double the amount of people who will be doing that, they are stopping people, the exits on the freeway as, as you exit and enter the freeway, you have to go over that bridge, there is no real sidewalk, there's only a narrow area so that people also have to step onto the street on Baylor, and it's a narrow crossing there, and there is really no adequate parking here, and they say in their, you know, evidently, the water department has told them that there's plenty of water for all their development, and they have that in their report at the Coastal Commission, and we're being told that there's such inadequate water that we have to have toilet to tap. This is, this is not a small thing that's going to happen here. It's going to be, it, it's going to completely change the nature of, at least this part of Carpinteria, and it's going to affect the bluffs as well.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Rayner.
All right, then, the last Zoom speaker is Carl Sonken. Carl, go ahead.
Okay, I'm unmuted. My name is Carl Sonken. Welcome me, please, to Carpinteria. I'm a new resident here, and I love it here. I just recently bought a condo in the Casitas Village, and across the street from me is the proposed massive development that would come about if the Coastal Commission upholds the upzoning that was put upon us by the county. I'm really rather concerned about, you know, am I going to lose my alley so I won't be able to park my car? I mean, right now, if I'm told to park out on the street about 5 o'clock at night, all the parking is filled on, via, via Real, Hickok, Birch, or Hickory, that is, and Birch, and of course, on, on Baylor. As I said, this is a real big change for this community, and I'm just thinking that, you know, I'm really supportive of members of our council going to the Coastal Commission and making our concerns known, especially people like Carl Sonken, who's a new resident, and the hundreds of people in the Casitas Village properties that will be affected by it. Thank you very much for listening to me.
And Mayor, we have one more Zoom speaker, Lorraine McIntyre. Lorraine, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff. Thank you so much for providing an opportunity for us to speak on this matter. I mirror the comments made previously by my neighbors. I live over here at the Villa Del Mar condos, and, you know, I spend a lot of time at Monte Vista Park. That's where we're hoping to put in the permanent installation of the dog park. I know that parking is definitely a huge concern already. As you know, a lot of the houses, condos here have a garage and a carport, but with the cost of living the way it is, people are, are, you know, living in a unit, three, four, five cars, you know, to be able to afford the mortgage or the rent, and so they spill over onto the street. I understand that the Redtail property development will not even have one space per unit, and it's more than likely that those units will have more than one car. And so that is just one of the concerns. The other concern is that there's only one way in and one way out, and unless there's an easement or a back way to access the property, it's going to be super-congested there, and it's just not a, a good location for that number of units. So I support the council spending the money, the budget, to send a representative- to send a representative to Sacramento, and hopefully that will make a difference. Thank you very much.
And Mayor, that concludes Zoom comment.
Great, so I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for further discussion and emotion. And I'll just reiterate some of the things that staff is looking for is if we'll be sending one to two city representatives. If so, approve the budget appropriation. And then finally, provide additional direction to city staff on proposed comment letter.
Could I ask a question of staff?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm wondering about the Coastal Act and if they, if there's anything in there about what appropriate buffers from agriculture. And maybe you don't know off the top of your head, but I seem to remember different language maybe from, maybe not from the Coastal Act, maybe other places about how you're supposed to make a buffer from agriculture to residential. But at a minimum, it seems like increasing the density was, is, would not be what they had in mind.
Indeed, yes. Thank you, Councilmember Clark, through the mayor. I don't believe there's an objective buffer necessarily in the Coastal Act, but there are many policies about that incompatibility of development with agriculture. And we will definitely look carefully and bring forward everything that in our letter regarding how these rezones would conflict with that. And the county, what you might be thinking of is they do have a right to farm ordinance, which ensures...
So that's a potential conflict.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
I can add on to this a little bit here. So Councilmember Clark, you are correct in that the Coastal Commission does call for establishing stable boundaries to separate urban and rural areas, including where necessary, clearly defined buffer areas to minimize conflicts between agriculture and urban land uses. So that's as far as the Coastal Act gets into it. But then what you see at the local level are actual...
Like in the county itself.
Right, so in the case of the county, right, objectives, development standards that are included in the county's LCP to then implement that high-level state language. So I think at the, in the county, I think it's typically like a 100-foot buffer from adjacent agriculture that has to be maintained. Of course, our concern in these projects is that a developer would try to then utilize density bonus to just eliminate the requirement to provide that buffer at all. And in fact, we've seen that already in the Bayard application. That is part of that project, the builder's remedy version of it, the developer was proposing to use density bonus concessions to just ask for a waiver from the agricultural buffer entirely. And I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, others follow suit.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
If I may, I wanted to just clarify a couple of comments in response to some of the things we heard from the public. So I think maybe one of the council members had asked about how much speaking time folks get at Coastal Commission hearings. It's typically two to three minutes per person, so short and sweet comments. There was also, I think, some comments from Ms. Boyd about, right, kind of costs that would be passed on to the city. And I wanted to just make a couple, you know, kind of clarifications or distinguishing remarks there. So costs related to something like fire service or school service are borne by the school district or the fire district. They have their own boundaries, which these properties are already located within. So those costs wouldn't be borne by the city. But costs in terms of added demand on roadways or recreational facilities or some of those other types of services that we do pay for would impact the city. And because these properties are located outside of the city, they wouldn't necessarily be helping pay for that through their taxes or other fees that they're, that they're paying as part of the project. And then finally, I know it's come up a couple times tonight, the question about parking with Bayard. So I think we heard from, blanking on her name, Daisy, that the project would provide just shy of 300 parking spaces for 182 units. That comes out to an average of 1.6 parking spaces per unit. I don't know exactly what the mix of unit is, but units are. It's, my last recollection is it's a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, but we can assume safely that even most one-bedroom units are going to have two adults living in them, each who may have a car. So you can see quickly how even with 300 parking spaces for 180-plus units, you're going to, you're likely going to outstrip that parking supply. And that overflow then would likely end up on our city streets.
Great, thank you. I'll bring it back to the council. Is there any interest from any council members to attend?
My apologies, I will not be available. I've already booked it. I was, previous to the rescheduling of the meeting, I was able to attend. That was the same time as the Long Beach one. So I would have been able to make that one. This one here, November 6th, unfortunately, I'll be out of the country evaluating a major rotary project.
Thank you. I too would have loved to have attended, however, I will be out of the state the day in which the hearing is happening.
I would be very interested in attending. I feel very strongly that being in person is the right approach. It's what the community is asking for us, but I also feel very strongly that it's what the city should be doing. It's how we should show up. So I would, I would be interested in going.
I think Councilmember Mayor would be a great representative for us in that, in that capacity. Thank you.
Would we like to send just one representative or also send our city manager? Is there any thoughts on that in person?
Yeah, definitely.
And I would like to make a suggestion before you start taking action on this one. I would recommend a roll-call vote, just for transparency, since this is going to be a... Yeah, it's not, it's not in the guidelines, but I would recommend that.
Great, thank you.
It implies money.
Yep.
Okay, it looks like we are in favor with having two representatives, one of them being the city manager and Councilmember Mayor. And then shall we have additional conversation around providing the city direction with proposed comment letter with specifics? I know what was recommended or an idea was having a slightly different approach and really focusing on certain primary concerns as opposed to the strategy that we have been taking?
I would suggest, at this time, I would leave it to whoever's writing the letters to make those comments or suggestions, recommendations. Personally, I think we'd be stronger just making sure we have one front instead of two. If our intent is to actually have our representatives go up there to stop the projects, and that's specifically what the intent is, I think we will have time for phase two if, in fact, that we are unsuccessful.
Yeah, I agree. I think that focusing on the urban-rural boundary and what, you know, not allowing, I mean, not allowing, maybe not the right word, but staying true to what, not allow, not, not letting the county sort of erode what we have created and have worked very hard to hold. I think that in and of itself is a good way to approach it because I do sort of agree that if and when we can cross those bridges, but changing course now is not the right answer.
Okay.
And what, I just, you know, I think we can, we can, staff's been studying this a long time, and I think staff's really on the right page that we want to...
Staff and council.
Yeah.
Thank you. You know, part of the reason we wanted to bring this in front of you was just to try to get a sense of, right, do you, and it sounds like, right, we want to, we want to hold steady on trying to protect the urban-rural boundary, and that's going to implicate all three of these sites and then, you know, put us in a position then of being not in favor of any of the three sites. And that's, I guess, part of what we just wanted to run by the council, was make sure there wasn't some nuance here that you wanted us to take a different tack on, you know, Bayard from the others or vice versa. You know, knowing that in the past, right, we have at times said, we're not fully opposed to a housing project at Bayard. We're opposed to this housing project at Bayard. Right, so there's some nuance there then if that was a different position from, say, Van Wingerden.
But what does that, what does that get us then?
It's hard to say in this case because we don't know, you know, where the decision-makers land. Right, it's, it's kind of going back to, I think, what Michael had, had mentioned in that we can still raise our primary concerns and have our, have our, you know, primary asks out there. But then if they are going to go forward in some reason, then we say, you know, we'd like you to still address X, Y, and Z.
But if we were, if we were, if we were using arguments based on the Coastal Act itself, you know, why, shouldn't we just be consistent in that?
And that's fine. Like I said, we just wanted to bring it up and understand where the council was going from.
I understand the whole horse-trading thing, but it, but it could also work against us.
Yeah, I agree. I think we are, we know who we are presenting to, it's Coastal Commission. So I think we have to address their policies. Make sure that the policies that we cite forward are policies that they created and they're supposed to uphold.
That's great. Makes it easier for us if it's consistent across the board.
That'd be my suggestion.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
Sure, happy to do that. I authorize that Councilmember Mayor and City Manager represent the city council at the November 6th, 2025 California Coastal Commission meeting to deliver remarks regarding the county of Santa Barbara's proposed rezoning of parcels in Carpinteria Valley.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. I will ask for a roll-call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Solarsno?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Nomura?
Aye.
And Mayor Alarcon?
Aye. Thank you for your presentation. Okay, I'm seeing that we do not have a legislative update. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Committee reports, inquiries, and other matters presented by council members.
A couple of quick things. So MTD met last, the MTD Board met last week. We received a financial update and fourth-quarter review of fiscal year 2425, and then also discussed some updates to the non-represented employee health benefits. The Public Engagement Committee met last week, and we discussed the new city logo, public branding plan. And then the General Plan Update Committee met last week as well and discussed the Coastal Commission's recommended edits to the draft general plan update.
Thank you. Any other updates? Okay. Seeing none, we will, I will ask, in terms of attendance, will all council members be here at our next council member meeting?
Yes.
All right, great. And we will officially adjourn the meeting at 8:32 PM. Thank you.